Good evening, everyone. So happy to see all of the smiling faces and glad to see that you are safe and healthy. This work session of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Thursday, September 3rd, 2020. On March 16th, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meeting laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus. Accordingly, due to health and safety concerns, this meeting is being conducted by video conference. The time is now 6:01 PM. Board Trustees present are Winford Adams Jr., Kelly Hodges, Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Jana Gonzalez, Dawn Davis, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to mute their microphones unless speaking too. Our first order of business is a review of the minutes from previous meetings. Does any trustee have any changes or corrections to the minutes of the August 6th, 2020 board work session or the August 11th, 2020 regular meeting? Hearing none, these items will be submitted as a part of the consent agenda at the September 8th Board of Trustees' regular meeting. We will now hear from our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Good evening, President Newhouse and all the trustees. I greet each of you all again. Tonight, we have a full agenda, especially with some of the policies that's going. But I do, before I get started, I want to say a very special thank you to all of our principals and teachers. Since our last meeting, we have started school on August 17th, and I'm proud to say, having had an opportunity to go out and visit campuses and seeing many of our teachers who are already on campuses, teaching remotely from their classroom, things are all to a great start. We have received some feedback from parents regarding the connectivity that they have at their home, things going off and on at times, but overall, we've had a very positive experience with the work that our teachers are doing. There's one thing for sure, that the work that they are doing is truly unprecedented, and the work that they're doing is a lot. And so, we do want to thank them for all of the work that they're doing to prepare engaging lessons for our students. I've had the unique opportunity to listen to my son in all of his classes every day with some of the supports we're providing for our teachers to be able to bring kids that Mr. Miranda will share later. And it's amazing to see that not only are we providing the core and classroom instruction, but they are providing instruction for the elective classes as well. And so, I think even though we are going to be sharing our asynchronous plan this evening, there is so much synchronous learning that's happening for our students, which that's what we heard from our parents, that they wanted in the feedback from the spring semester. So, once again, kudos to all of our teachers and our principals for the work that they are doing. Tonight, we will be starting with two presentations, one of which is our asynchronous plan. The Ms. Westbrooks will be leading off for us, and this is a requirement from TEA, and she'll be sharing a little bit more about the requirements, the specific requirements, and how we're implementing that. In addition to that, we're going to be sharing with you again the next steps, the update as to where we're moving in terms of our COVID numbers, as well as how we're going to be wanting to bring our students back. I think more than anything, as we've walked around our campuses and heard from teachers, as well as heard from parents, we miss our students, and we miss our students being in school, and we know that school in-class learning is the best possible place for them, and we want them back. And so, we're going to be sharing with you, as you requested in our last meeting, feedback from parents. A survey went out, we'll be sharing with you an update as to the feedback of what parents in our community who chose in-person learning, what they're saying in terms of their comfort level, and having their children return. In addition to that, we're going to be touching on special ed. We know that's an area of focus, if it will, that you all that wanted us to focus on again for this year, we'll be sharing with you updates on special ed and what we're doing to meet the needs of all of our students in the special education program. And so, with that, I think that's it. Now, ready to jump into the agenda, I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Newhouse.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. And as you indicated, our first item on our agenda tonight is the asynchronous instruction plan. So, at this time, I would like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer and Westbrooks.
Thank you, President Newhouse. Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Watson. I will go ahead and share my screen so we can begin our presentation. So, this evening, we're bringing forward to the Board of Trustees our asynchronous instruction plan, which is a requirement to be submitted to TEA in order to continue to receive full funding for the district throughout the 2021 school year as we're continuing to provide remote instruction. So, we know as we were finishing up the second semester as a result of the pandemic, when we were closed for the beginning of the pandemic, we were required to provide instructional support to our students. And so long as we were providing instructional support to our students, we were receiving full funding, and therefore, we were, for all intents and purposes, held harmless as far as funding goes. Well, moving forward into the 2021 school year, TEA came up with two different types of instruction, and that's synchronous and asynchronous. And that remote instruction is how our student attendance is funded now for the 2021 school year. And so, just as a reminder, synchronous instruction, that's our two-way, real-time, live instruction that happens between our students and our teachers. And asynchronous instruction is more self-paced. It's where students are learning on their own time, and they're interacting intermittently with our teachers. We're able to offer both synchronous and asynchronous learning to our students through platforms that we already had in the district, such as Schoology, utilizing the Schoology Conference, Google Meets, and then other platforms such as Edgenuity. As part of the new funding structure for the 2021 school year, the remote asynchronous instruction plan allows districts the flexibility to earn daily attendance through an approved plan, which is what we're bringing forward to you all tonight, that provides high-quality instructional practices with daily engagement measures, and districts are able to earn ADA, that average daily attendance, through either primarily asynchronous instructional methods or through a combination of both asynchronous and synchronous instruction together. And as you heard Dr. Watson mention, we have an asynchronous instruction plan, which is what we'll be seeking the Board's approval on. However, we have embedded lots of synchronous instruction as a part of our asynchronous So, here's a look at the timeline and how the plan needs to be submitted to ensure that the district continues to receive full funding throughout this year. The first step in the process was to submit to TA a letter of intent, and that letter of intent says that we intend to submit a full, remote, asynchronous instructional plan to TA. We're required to submit that letter of intent prior to the first day of remote instruction. And so, that's a check mark for the district. We submitted our letter of intent on July 20th, and by doing so, we received contingent approval from TA, which allows us to continue to receive funding for the first three, six weeks utilizing our remote instruction. The next step is, is that we have to submit a full plan to TA prior to October 1st, and that's critical, because between October 1st and the end of our third six-weeks reporting period, we have to have our plan reviewed by TA and then ultimately approved in order to continue to receive funding beyond the third six weeks. So, that's why we're bringing the plan forward, to receive the Board's approval, and we'll be seeking that approval on Tuesday night. And upon your approval, our plan is to have the asynchronous plan submitted to TA on or before September 15th, which is ahead of that October 1st deadline. So, as we were working to pull together the asynchronous plan, we approached it in three different phases. So, you've seen lots of presentations over the last couple of months of all the work that has taken place, as we developed our scenario-based planning for the reopening of schools. So, there was lots of work that had already been done, and most of what we needed, that needed to be a part of the asynchronous plan, had already been developed. So, our approach was to work with the information that was already available and push it into the plan, and then add to it where needed. So, the first phase began in late July, and we had a cross-collaborative team of multiple departments, including curriculum, data management and compliance, communications, our family and community engagement team. Lots and lots of different members from the team were a part of developing this plan. So, in Phase 1, which was led by Dr. Cabrina Johnson, who you'll hear from in just a moment, the first draft of the plan was developed utilizing the TA rubric and some exemplars that were provided. The second phase was a completely separate team that was not a part of Phase 1, and their role was to provide a critical review of the draft plan and come up with additions, revisions, and review notes for that team. So, then the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 team worked together to come up with that final draft of the plan, which was presented to our cabinet this week, earlier this week. And then, the last part of the Phase 3 is to present it to you, our Board of Trustees, seeking your approval so that we can submit it to TA. The asynchronous plan has four key requirements, and that's the instructional schedule, the material design, student progress, and then implementation. So, you all have received a copy of the plan, the written full plan, and so, this is what it looks like. And so, as you're taking some time over the next several days to read through the plan and familiarize yourself with it, we wanted to show you exactly how the plan is laid out. So, first, we have attestations. So, we, as a district, are attesting to the type of instruction and the type of instructional resources that we're providing to our students. So, as I mentioned earlier, there's those four key requirements, and so, this just shows you, this is the first one, the instructional schedule. That's the first key requirement. And here, these are the things that we're attesting to. We're saying that our plan has teacher interaction with students that's predictable, and it is sufficient to support the instructional schedule. We talk through the plan with the teacher's availability, etc. Then, throughout the plan, you'll see these blue hyperlinks, and anytime that you see a blue hyperlink, you can click on that link, and you'll see some evidence and some artifacts that'll show you things that are happening within the district as part of this instructional plan. And also, the plan has open-ended questions. So, we had to respond to these open-ended questions, such as, what are the expectations for daily student interaction with academic content? And then, you see the explanation beside it, and anywhere that we had evidence of what was taking place, that's where you will see those hyperlinks that you can click on and say, oh, okay, that's what they're talking about, that's what we're doing, or that's the resource that we're providing. So, the first key requirement that we've just seen is the instructional schedule. And so, as a part of this component of the plan, we have to set our expectations for when and in what setting our students are learning. And our instructional schedule should be as close to as possible an on-campus instructional model. So, our students should have access to the same type of instruction, the same type of resources, as if they were on our campuses. So, that's where that teacher interaction comes in, making sure our teachers are available to our students, we're providing instructional support, and we have clear means of how our students will engage with the academic material on a daily basis. We're still required to ensure that our student IEPs are followed and that we have rigorous academic engagement that, again, is equivalent to the type of engagement that would happen inside our classrooms. And so, I'd like to now ask Dr. Cabrina Johnson to come forward and talk you through and show you some of those evidences that show what our asynchronous plan's instructional schedule looks like. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. During the summer, the school schedules and instruction committees developed microplans to address remote learning in the case of school closures. These plans outline daily instruction if there was going to be a need for instruction to continue with 100% of the time online throughout the school year for the 2020-21 school year. Through continued work with each of the Level's curriculum and instruction directors and a campus master scheduler, daily schedules were outlined to provide a structure for the instructional day upon return for the fall. These schedules were designed to stay true to the traditional schedule, ensuring that students would have access and be able to engage with the various subjects as if they were in a brick-and-mortar setting throughout different times of the day, either by time of day or through the periods within each day. TA simply requires a minimum of 30 minutes of pre-planned student interaction during the school day, as well as a minimum of 180 minutes of engagement across all content areas in grades pre-5, and then a minimum of 240 minutes of engagement across all subject areas in grade 6 through 12. As we explore two of the daily schedules, you'll find that the district is well over the minimum number of expectations that TA has set for instructional time throughout the day. In the elementary daily schedule, you'll see that there's pre-planned instruction that occurs through the live instruction, as well as small group intervention time. So, you'll see that one of the first blocks is 8:35 to 10 o'clock. That is a pre-planned time for teachers to meet with students. The elementary schedule also provides time for students to interact with content across all subject areas, both asynchronously and synchronously, for a total of 395 minutes during the school day. As we look at the high school daily schedule, you'll find that there is also pre-planned instruction here, and that can be outlined through the academic time. So, you'll see one of the very first blocks is 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., and that is academic time. That would be pre-planned time that teachers are meeting and interacting with students throughout the school day, as well as additional time that has been scheduled for small group intervention time as well. The secondary schedule provides time for students to interact as well throughout all of the content areas, both synchronously and asynchronously, for a total of 405 minutes. As we look at some additional images, these are actually from our very first week of school when students and teachers return. So, this is just an example of how students and teachers have been interacting as we've been back in school. So, you'll see that there are two photos, and both of those photos highlight the use of meets by teachers to interact with their students throughout the day, either during whole-group instruction or during intervention or small-group time. The first picture you see highlights two campus teachers presenting our learning management system, Schoology, to their students as they are providing instruction during the school day. Students also have additional instructional supports that are made available to them by their teachers. In the video we will see, you'll see a teacher-created instructional video that has been posted on the teacher's YouTube page. You can figure it out. It actually affects the other three. So, a solid, always in motion, everything's always moving. That's important. But, in a solid, it's not moving much. All right? Here's my demonstration of the solid, and I'm just like, eh, bum, bum, uh, can't go anywhere. Or, all right? Solid. Now, the liquid. Things move up a little bit, all right? Something changes. It allows them to. All right? I'm a liquid, I'm moving now. Hey, I can get around some, I'm good. Ooh, skip, skip, step around that. All right? Good, I got space between us, I can move a little faster. Third base. Big difference here. Oh, no! I can't be contained! I don't want to stop! I don't want something! Yeah. So, here you see that these are just a couple of the supports that are given to our students throughout the day. They are well aware of Schoology being the learning management system that they should be accessing to get in touch with their teachers and engage themselves throughout the instructional day. These are supports that are made available to all of our students, but we do have additional supports for our students within our special populations. So, teachers are going to utilize, or have been utilizing, the instructional supports that are already embedded in our district curriculum. These materials support the language goals of our EL population, as well as the instructional accommodations for our special education students. Now, we'll look a little further at the supports provided by teachers for these students.
Okay, so, next step, we have our second key requirement of the asynchronous instructional plan, and that's material design. And so, it says here that we have to have a curriculum that is designed for asynchronous student learning. It has to be a full, teaceline curriculum. It has to also provide accommodations and modifications to support our students that have disabilities, as well as those students that are English-language learners. And we also have to show what instructional materials are available and used during instruction and that are available to give our students that hands-on instruction that we know they so critically need. So, now, I'm going to ask Ms. Ayanna LeBron, who is our Director of Special Education and Student Support, to walk us through some of that evidence of the material design.
Thank you. Before I jump into the materials design section of the TEA plan, I want to begin by recognizing that students are responding to online learning in very different ways. Some students are thriving while others are struggling to keep up. For myself, I have three school-aged children who are all experiencing the joys and the pains of remote learning. We are having to adjust our home practices to ensure that every class gets the attention required for daily attendance and appropriate grades. The Special Education Department wants students to return to in-person learning, and we are prepared for their return into our schools. However, some parents are selecting to have their children learn remotely, and we want to honor that by ensuring that materials provided through asynchronous, as well as synchronous instruction, meet the needs of our diverse learners in our district. During this remote learning period, TEA has made it very clear that serving English learners and providing equitable access to the appropriate bilingual education, or ESL, program, has not changed. Furthermore, they state that all students eligible for special education are to have an instructional plan that is responsive, flexible, and enables rigorous instruction for all students, regardless of the setting. You will notice that the material supports mentioned in the materials design plan are currently being used by teachers who teach special populations as they plan and execute instruction to ensure all students are making progress in the grade-level curriculum. Take the lesson that you just saw from Mr. Tucker. He incorporated visuals, motion, as well as humor, to not only teach the students, but to ensure that the information sticks with the learners. All of these elements are supports embedded to reach diverse student populations. The supports shared with you tonight are aligned to TEA expectations, as well as our district expectations to reach all learners. Last month, Dr. Parisso walked you through an overview of the curriculum documents, where you were able to see how the curriculum is aligned to support learning in an asynchronous and synchronous learning environment. What you see here is a portion of one of our high school unit guides built into Schoology that has these embedded supports. When you look at the document, you'll see that we have social-emotional learning, as well as differentiation built into every unit guide available to teachers. All of the blue highlights are the clickable components that teachers have readily available that they can access in real time. Built into the asynchronous learning plan, you're going to find links to access the supports for special populations. This information is inclusive of resources that teachers use to reach our students who have the greatest needs. At this time, we're going to click on a couple of the links to share with you the supports available within the plan and that teachers across our district are accessing and using. We're going to begin with a closer look at some of the supports available to teachers instructing students with special education needs by looking at the Special Education Support Manual. This resource has been developed to provide easy access to a toolkit that gives specifics on resources, as well as supports to assist teachers with implementation. So, this manual, as you look at it, is inclusive of 13 pages of clickable supports that can be found in our staff portal. Let's take a minute and look at Page 2. If you'll click on Page 2 for me, this page provides teachers with instructional strategies. So, every portion of this page is clickable, so let's click on Activating Prior Knowledge. Here, you're going to see how we embed video exemplars for elementary and secondary teachers, as well as resources underneath that provide teachers with the tools to use that support activating knowledge. Going back to the side panel on the manual, let's take a minute and look at Page 5, Implementing Accommodations. This page provides teachers with how to incorporate accommodations. One really important piece to remember is that we support individuals. Therefore, even when we have a plan for that student's IEP, knowing the student is essential to meeting their individual needs. So, if you click on Know the Student in the middle of the page, you see that the resources are available to teachers to use when they're getting to know their students. Again, you'll see video exemplars, as well as documents that can be used so that teachers can get to know those students. Additionally, at the end of the side panel of this manual, you can see that we have added additional resources specifically for remote learning. This COVID-19 tab includes information and resources provided by TEA, by our Regional Service Center, as well as Spring ISD resources. So, if you click on the resources in Spring ISD, we can see one of the supports that our students are currently using is within our Don Johnson Suite. This provides online learning tools directly to our students in Spring ISD. So, let's click on the eLearning PDF to see the supports available for our students. And here, you can see the built-in online supports, inclusive of reading and writing. And if you scroll down the page, there's components for study skills, e-learning, math, as well as testing and data tracking built into this system that's available. So, now, let's leave this special education manual and move into additional resources for our English learners. This is the Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, otherwise known as PSYOP, that was developed to make content more comprehensible to English learners through lesson preparation, embedded strategies, and lesson implementation. To take you into a couple of the examples here, let's go into the elementary section. How about the first-grade literacy? And it provides teachers with an exemplar lesson plan to reach the English learners, so they're able to develop their own lessons accordingly. Within this support, we highlight the importance of including background knowledge to prepare students for learning, as well as identifying the English proficiency level to support the rest of the lesson design. Additionally, if you leave that page and go back to our main page on PSYOP, yes, let's look at a middle school example. One of the supports here is Differentiated Anticipation Guide. This guide shows teachers how to embed visuals, as well as those definitions to vocabulary that's essential for the learning. Teachers are trained to use all of these materials and the resources that you see embedded into the asynchronous plan. We begin in the summer to train them, and we train throughout the school year through our professional development offerings.
Okay, so, our next portion, that's a key requirement as part of the asynchronous plan, is student progress. So, here, we have to show what daily student progress looks like, we have to define it, and we have to show how we're going to measure it. So, progress must be planned in advance, defined by day, it has to have a course syllabus that explains what are we planning on doing. We need to be able to track our student engagement on a daily basis, and also show how we're going to measure academic progress. Our teachers need to provide feedback to our students, at least weekly, and we need to have consistent school grading policies, whether our students are joining us through remote instruction or whether they're on the campus. Those grading policies have to be consistent. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kelly Anderson, who is our Director of Elementary Curriculum, to show you some evidence of how we're defining and measuring student progress. to show you some evidence of how we're defining and measuring student progress.
Good evening. As you know, student progress is the result of great instruction. Teachers collaborate to plan great instruction in professional learning communities weekly, either virtually or face-to-face if on campus, based on schedules set by their campuses. Teachers utilize the Spring ISD Curriculum Unit Guides to plan for instruction in advance and by day, which ties to their course syllabus. See an example here of our Spring ISD Unit Guide that helps guide teachers as they plan for great instruction. On the left-hand side, you will see an instructional model that helps guide a teacher's lesson, and on the right-hand side, you will see lessons broken down by the day. Teachers use this to create assignments and then post them in Schoology for students to access and complete. Students must be in attendance to learn. Teachers will record attendance through the Teacher Access Center at a specified time of the day depending on their grade level and if they are remote or on-campus learning. A student who misses a synchronous session will receive an automated phone call from Blackboard thirty minutes after the end of the synchronous session, encouraging the student to log into the system. If a student misses a second synchronous session, then the campus attendance team makes a personal phone call to their household. However, if a student is not able to log in during a synchronous session, then they will have the opportunity until eleven fifty-nine of that day to record an asynchronous activity, such as teacher interaction, showing progress through Schoology, or completing an assignment. Here is an example of an exit ticket a student would be able to submit that would count as attendance for the day, as well as show student progress for the day. The data management and compliance team, in collaboration with the campus attendance team, work closely together to capture accurate attendance for the day. All teachers and attendance clerks have been trained on how to take attendance in a remote environment. Measuring academic progress, providing teacher feedback, and our grading policies are all held to the same standards, whether students are in remote learning or on-campus learning. Teachers will monitor students' usage and assignment completion weekly and hold conferences based on student needs. Schoology messaging or district email will be used to contact parents if students fall below seventy percent for the week or are not on track with coursework. Please refer back to the student schedules where you can see there is an academic time allowed for teachers to conference with students or parents as needed. Teachers respond to students and/or parents' questions via Schoology email or during synchronous learning time. Teachers are expected to provide feedback to students on assignments weekly via conferencing or Schoology grading protocols. You can see here in this image above how teachers are able to leave feedback when they grade assignments in Schoology. The district will continue to use traditional grading using Teacher Access Center and posting progress reports, report cards in HAC, the Home Access Center. We have had the opportunity to think differently during this pandemic, and our teachers and faculty are continuing to think outside of the box to engage all students consistently and to continue to meet the guidelines of TEA in the area of student progress.
Okay, our final, fourth and final key component of the asynchronous plan is implementation. Any plan, any plan that you put out is only as good as how well it's implemented. And so as part of this portion of the plan, we have to show what support has been provided to our, to our educators, our teachers, in order to implement this plan, and we also have to show how are we communicating the availability of support and resources to our, to our families. They need to know what's available to them. So lastly, we'd like to ask Ms. Diana Kimberly, who is our Executive Director of Workforce Development, and then Ms. Letty Gonzalez, who is our Director of, or excuse me, Executive Director of Family Engagement, to walk us through what implementation looks like from a professional development and from a family support lens. So first up is Ms. Diana Kimberly.
As we prepared for staff to return this past summer, we created two full days, August eleventh and twelfth, of professional learning. All sessions were focused on getting the teachers and staff members ready for the synchronous and asynchronous virtual learning environment. The sessions were content-focused and directly correlated and deliberately planned to meet the needs of the blended learning environment. Here are some screenshots of our year-long professional learning catalog. This catalog is a live document and holds all of our professional learning throughout the school year. You can see from the table of contents that all departments across the district have sessions entered into this catalog. The sessions are built with three layers. The first session is built to deliver the instruction and for the teachers to go back with synchronous and asynchronous learning both, to deliver the instruction, implement their learning with their students, and then to come back a second time a little bit later to bring artifacts back to show their learning. Artifacts could be anything, including anchor charts, student work, videos of lessons, student-created videos, or lesson plans with activities highlighted. And then there's also a third follow-up session to ensure mastery of the learning and implementation. We wanted to put this in place to ensure that our teachers were getting the support that they needed through our blended learning environment with the synchronous and asynchronous learning by putting the three different sessions in there to solidify their learning and mastery of the information. All of our sessions that are provided are recorded and stored in Schoology and our Curriculum Innovation Lab, so that teachers and staff could go back to that innovation lab and pull those videos at their leisure on their own time to refresh their memory of the learning or to just learning something maybe that they hadn't learned previously, which also is in line with asynchronous learning. We have many self-paced courses available to staff to access at their own time also. Each department has many sessions within this catalog to address all grade level and content areas. And as we support our teachers and staff members in their professional learning, we also need to support our parents and our community members. Ms. Letty Gonzalez from Family Engagement and I is, work together, our partnership, to provide some of that support for our parents and communities, and she's going to share that with you now.
As you know, Dr. Watson held town hall meetings for parents and community members in July to inform them of our reopening of schools' plan to move forward. Overwhelmingly, what we heard throughout these sessions was that parents needed help understanding our online management system, Schoology and Home Access Center. So the Parent Engagement Department immediately got to work and developed three support plans to assist our families to better support their children learning from home. Family instructional technology support, the Power Hour sessions, and our Family Empowerment Guidebook and Companion Trainings. Now through a collaborative effort between the Family Engagement Department and our Workforce Development Department, the Family Instructional Technology Series was developed. We presented six virtual webinars, three in English, three in Spanish, that were very well attended, over five hundred attendees and no less than three hundred. The webinars, the webinar was an overview of both systems. Presenters modeled step-by-step instructions on how to log on, how to create an account, and how to navigate through the basic components of the system. Moving forward, this support will be expanded to include a monthly series of workshops at the campus level presented by the Campus Digital Learning Coach. The focus of the monthly sessions will provide parents with a deeper understanding of the systems, so it's not like we were going to provide training and then let them go. The DLCs or the Digital Learning Coaches will be a resource for parents with scheduled opportunities to engage with technology during open lab sessions and office hours to assist parents and family members. The Family Engagement Department will provide parents with continued support in the use of our online systems as well. Our department has launched a series of Power Hour workshops that will teach parents and families how to strategically use and leverage the district online management systems. By teaching our families how to use district resources, they will be empowered to more closely support and monitor their child's education. For example, when families need to know, families need to know how to review their child's attendance and how to review their grades. They have to know how to be able to set alerts to be notified when their child's attendance or grades fall below expectations. Sessions will be offered in both English and Spanish. Now, as our department continues to create and strengthen sustainable programs that increase family empowerment, we have also begun the process of developing a Family Empowerment Guidebook and Companion Trainings. It is designed to provide parents of children from all levels, elementary, middle, and high, with academic, social, and emotional resources on how to help their child be successful in schools. The district's commitment is that once a family has enrolled in Spring ISD, it is then our responsibility to actively engage families in a way that their child's education follows them from the classroom into their home and vice versa. We believe we must prepare not only our scholars, teachers, staff, and administrators, but also the parents and guardians, because we are all partners in our students' education.
In summary, we have planned, we have executed, and we are continuing to pivot as the need arises. With that, as we listen and observe, we also adjust. You've heard tonight from a few of our team members, but know that we represent over a hundred other voices that have led micro teams, scenario-based planning, as well as feedback from our stakeholders. We have been working to ensure our community's needs would be at the forefront. Again, collaborative teams started to work in the summer to create a space to receive feedback, innovative ideas, all while working to be intentional with our design to support our scholars. In addition to what has been shared tonight, we also utilize the resources provided by the TEA, specifically their rubric, look fours, and pitfall documents, which were invaluable through our Phase One and Phase Two process. We benchmarked the work from our summer planning and our team design in alignment with what the TEA defined as an exemplar. This further allowed us to crosswalk our responses to the open-ended questions. In addition to the intern work, we also participated with a support session offered by Region Four. We walked away from this meeting confident that our plan serves as an exemplar to the exemplar. Because we have been in school for a few weeks now, this plan has come to life. It is live and in action in our schools. As a result, you have heard evidence of the work we launched. We are seeing it at the school level as we visit virtually to support staff and scholars. Knowing that we want our scholars back in the building with us, we are proud of the work the team has invested to craft a way to meet our families where they are, with a strong start and with a strong plan. At this time, we know we have shared a lot, and we want to answer any questions you may have of our presenters.
Okay, I'll go first. Great work, and thank you so much for the wonderful presentation. There was an section where we talked about tracking the student's engagement, and can you elaborate for me a little bit on how engagement is tracked in this type of an environment? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am. We can hear you. Kelly Anderson, can you take that question for us, please?
Yes, and so we have a few different ways. They can track it by the completing assignments in Schoology. So we have exit tickets where the students, the teachers can assign, or do assign exit tickets each day, and that allows the teacher to know that the student was present that day. But then also there are other ways. So a student has the ability to interact with the teacher via either remotely through a Google Meet, or they can interact through email, or they can interact by completing an assignment on Schoology. So there's several ways that they can interact with the teacher to show that they are engaged and completing work each day.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have sort of a similar question addressed to you, Durant. I'm curious. The, the Special Ed Instructional Support Manual, very impressive. I really appreciate all the linked resources. My question is about how we track teacher utilization of the resource, whether that's through analytics or whatever. I'd be curious at some later point to see which links get the most hits, which resources the teachers find the most valuable, which resources don't get any hits at all. I'd love to see all of that kind of data.
That's a great statement, and yes, we can do that for you as we go through the year. Yes, sir.
This Debbie Jensen. First of all, I want to say that the system we all have created has just blown me away. I just have never seen anything like it. I've been here for twelve years, and let me tell you that this is something I, I just couldn't envision. So congratulations to everybody who's worked on this. You know, as a former teacher, when I looked at all these resources and all the links for different situations and to help students be successful, it really has it. What I am concerned about is how many students are still not in possession of a computer? And how many students are having connection problems even with us handing out hotspots?
So I think we'll be able to address that in our next presentation. So towards the end of the next presentation, we'll have an update on technology. Until then, otherwise we can.
Yeah, I had the same question. So me and Debbie are thinking the same thing. Do we have enough technology infrastructure? Because we're asking technology to do a really heavy lift, so I want to, I'll be looking forward to that.
Yeah, I had a similar question too, so we'll hold on to those questions. I'm still struggling a little bit with the engagement, and here's why I ask. I know we can take attendance, we can get their assignments, but with COVID, people, you know, our kids are shut in, they don't have a lot of interaction with the other kids, and, and I don't, how do we know they're, they're engaged and paying attention? You know, while they're getting the lessons and how interactive are the lessons? Can you maybe give me a couple scenarios to help me feel a little more comfortable that they're not, that they're engaged and that they're not disconnected?
So I can give you a few examples since I listen to my son every day.
Okay.
And so during the day, the teacher constantly asks them open-ended questions or asking them to respond. They're using a lot of the springway routines and doing cold calls. So for kids that are there, that have their camera off, they are constantly saying, turn your camera, I won't say my son's name, but turn your camera on, such as John Doe, turn your camera on. But they are also engaging them in the work, asking them what they think as they go through the lessons as well. They're asking them to engage in the assignments and actually put in information so they can check it for understanding. They're asking them if they have any questions, and if they do, they're asking them to, during their brain break time, to check in on the link and stay in and asking them for help as they send them off to do the independent work. I think some of the other engaging things that they're doing is for students that are enrolled in the piano class, they're not only talking with them about the different music terminology in the class, and they've also provided opportunities for links. and they've also provided opportunities for links and devices for kids to practice piano at home. So not only are they teaching them the notes, they're asking them to actually play the piece back to them online so they can actually hear them playing it, which is, which I think is phenomenal.
Yes.
In addition to that, teachers, they're asking the kids that if they have specific concerns around things that they can't use, whether they're having a problem loading into Schoology, they're asking them to send that information to them by email to make sure that the students are staying engaged and actually are doing the work. So the teachers have been, as I said earlier today, it's been astounding for me to really listen to the teachers' engagement with the kids and the constant cold calls and asking them to keep their cameras on and to make sure that they're still checked into the lesson as they go across and actually saying to some kids that I missed you the other day, but thank you for submitting your work. So teachers are in a variety of things to really keep the kids engaged in the lesson. I've been very impressed with it.
Great, and you hit the nail on the head when you say ensuring that they're checked in because that's really what I'm asking. I know we've got that really quiet shy kid, you know, that is even a little introverted, even in an active class, you know, environment, and then how do we pull them in? And so that's, that's good to hear.
With all that said, I will say the best place for them is in school.
Absolutely.
They're doing a great job, but it doesn't beat being in the classroom.
It never will. Can you give me a couple scenarios around? I know we do the visual plans with our special ed students, but can you give me a couple of examples around? Because I'm still a little concerned, and I'm still getting some emails and questions on what we're doing for special ed. And so maybe if you have one, a special ed student is nonverbal, what are they getting? Or, you know, can you give me a couple of scenarios to help me get a clearer picture and understanding on the level of support we're providing for our special ed students?
Yes, ma'am. So for students who are nonverbal, it really depends on their level of ability to utilize either the technology with text-to-speech or a core board where they're able to point to pictures that they've been trained on using so they're able to say a sentence through picture form. So those are two strategies that we use with our students.
Thank you.
And I'll add that for those students, technology is actually a benefit, and we use a lot of assistive technology when students were with us face-to-face. And so that assistive technology, then students are able to watch videos. They really do well with some of the touchscreen technology or being able to, like Ms. LeBron shared, just show a picture so they have a lot of picture boards that they're using, similar to what we would think of as choice boards. So technology actually supports a lot of our students who are nonverbal.
Thank you so much.
I'm interested in one of the parents. I'm not, I'm sure it's not with all parents, but I bet you are getting quite a bit of feedback from parents about how amazing the curriculum and instruction is that their students are receiving. Do you have any stories in that area?
I think one of the interesting things is this past spring semester, and many of you all heard it through the spring semester and the summer, of how much work parents have to do to help teach their own kids at home. That's one comment that I have not heard since the first day of school, that parents are having to teach their own kids. The questions or the concerns that I'm hearing is about the kids sitting on the computers all day, getting that much instruction, but then also about internet connectivity, going in and out at their home. And it's not about not having a device, but it's more about the connectivity. And so we've, we've really done a great job with making sure that we heard the parents' feedback and that the teachers are providing great instruction. But there's, you know, one of the things that I do is listen to the parents' feedback and read their feedback on our Facebook, on our Facebook page or on our community Facebook page. And the parents are even doing a great job giving each other strategies. For example, internet cutting in and out, and parents were saying that I learned that, you know, when you have your TV on and you have four computers going at home and you have the radio, all those devices in the house that use Wi-Fi, having all those on at the same time, by turning some of those off, it helps with their own internet connectivity within their own house. And so, once again, I say those are the growing pains. We've gone from most of the districts around us not being one-to-one to all of us going to one-to-one and using technology all at the same time across the entire region. That has a strain. And so with that strain, we feel that strain here in the district sometimes with a slattering in and out. Sometimes some of the companies that we work with, they upgrade their system. They, they shut it down for a while and bring it back up because the system is overloaded. I think those are pain points, and those are the things that in-person instruction, you can't make up for by the kids being in the classroom, being able to get that. And so we're constantly hearing a lot of feedback. We get a lot of feedback. Some are excited and some are not that excited, but we make those adjustments as we get the feedback.
I want to echo what Debbie said. This is an awesome asynchronous plan that you have put together to present to TEA. You've done a wonderful job. Thank you, thank you. But I'm also still concerned a little bit about that child that we're leaving behind. As we used to say, we want no child left behind. I know we have some students that have Chromebooks, have hotspots, are getting the information, but there's no parent at home to push that student to doing something. And the student may come on and you never hear any type of response from the student. So have we been able to get maybe a percentage of students that are not responding to us or to the work? And I think I saw in your presentation where you have teachers that are calling these students as are reaching out to them. What percentage are they reaching out to? Are they getting them? And what is the plan, say, after a grading period when we haven't heard from someone? I'm still don't want to leave any child behind.
I think that's an excellent question. I think Dr. Carter has some artifacts that she'd like to show regarding that, and then I'll jump right back in afterwards.
Yes, absolutely. One thing that I wanted to be able to share, and it helps to answer even some of the questions that you just asked about President Newhouse, is regarding the ability that we have to be able to connect with students and with parents and even some of the learning that they're doing. What the assistant Suits and I have found as we've been visiting the classes is our parents are, for the ones that are at home and present, they're excited to be a part of the learning. And so you hear them side by side with some of the students. We've also heard from our parents based on what you just shared around what if I'm not at home or I'm not there during the learning? How do I help? How do I support? And so our campuses also have resources and links available to be able to support PowerPoints that kind of go over what they went over in class. This week, I held a town hall with some of our parents that are students, even in our district, and have connections to the community. And they shared that the resources and the PowerPoints that are available after hours and our after-hours line that's available for help desk is really helping to support and keep them engaged. So these are a few of the things that we've seen happening in our schools with teachers, with engagement, and being able to connect. And this also is recorded for even if our parents want to go back into support. We've even heard of siblings that are at home helping to support some of our learners as well. And so this just gives you some of the snapshot into the engagement, into what we're seeing happening at the campus, as well as what our teachers and our parents are doing to support around discussion, social, emotional learning. This is a pixel art class that the students were able to go in. And so tapping into their interests as well has been a way for us to get their engagement because they love technology. And so they're taking this by the horns and using it for some of the supports that they know that they need as well.
Seems like, thank you for that, Dr. Carter. It seems like a few, maybe a few weeks ago, there was an article in the Chronicle that talked about TEA tracking student engagement and involvement. And there was some figure in, like, our district fared well relative to the districts in our region. I think we were like eighty-five percent. And so I think kind of what we're asking is what are we doing about that fifteen percent?
What are the? I'll also add that we've done a lot with family outreach. We also have an event planned for September 12th where we're just going to go out. We've printed door hangers to reach families that maybe are not as engaged. We have fifty volunteers from Microsoft. Our Family Community Engagement Team has been working really closely with us, partnering to get volunteers so that we have a call center where we'll just be calling families. This week, a lot of our counselors actually came into the building to pick up their packets of materials that we have for each campus. So we've identified those students that we do kind of traditionally every year, who maybe had lots of absences last year or this year, we haven't had as much engagement. And so we are calling those students on those rosters. And then our district staff are partnering with campus staff so that next week and through the weekend, we can also just, you know, knock on doors if we need to, leave a door hanger, leave information, so that we are just making that additional personal connection for our families. So we have been just kind of tracking and monitoring them, and if there's any barrier, we are reaching out so that we remove those barriers to access.
And not to mention, just adding on to what Ms. Bradford said, you heard earlier in the presentation too about, we call them our call warriors. And so they're getting on the phones right after that first synchronous session. If the students are not showing up for that first synchronous session, they're getting an automated call. But if they miss that second synchronous session, then someone is actually picking up the phone and personally calling them. And so what we've been able to do is capture lots of data through those call logs. We're finding out, well, they didn't have internet connection this morning or this student still needs a Chromebook. And once we gather that information, then we're passing that off to the next team. And so when we started the first week of school, when we found out kids couldn't get on because they still hadn't picked up a Chromebook, we captured all of that data and handed it off to our technology team who worked with the campuses so that we could get a Chromebook to the students. So those daily active calls are still happening each and every day across the district at every single campus. And we've got maybe at some campuses up to twelve people that are calling our students on a daily basis, to the point where we had one principal say that they've gotten some complaints from the parents. And we said, that's okay. If you want us to stop calling, we want to see little Johnny in class and then everything, we'll stop calling you. So we've got a lot of calls going out throughout the day.
Let me just ask this. So Rodney, that report that TEA put out, that's based on data we reported, correct?
Yes, that's data that we reported from our system. If you remember, even in the spring semester, we had high engagement with our parents because we were doing a lot more to make sure we stay engaged. And we were having, where most places were just sending packets home for kids to do, we were still having them upload their assignments so they actually completed it. And so it doesn't surprise us that that is high because that was the expectation that you all had for us and that we had for our teachers and they had for their students, that they were, continue to teach them as well as upload assignments to show they were actually engaged in doing it.
Oh, and sort of in the same way, and so I'm speaking a lot, but when I first joined this board and we were doing the attendance matters, every month we were getting that update on where we were, ninety, ninety-one percent. And so I think I would like to see, and I don't know if the board agrees with me, I'd like to see sort of a regular report on what that engagement is looking like, that number that we're reporting to TEA. And as we close that gap and approach a hundred percent, I think that's something that we ought to be sharing.
Absolutely. Yeah, we had that conversation actually this morning. You know, being that it's still the beginning of the school year and we haven't gotten to the snapshot date, that fluctuates as we go through and take off no-shows. And so once we get that date, absolutely, we can put that in the board update for you all as a regular update.
Thank you.
And Dr. Watson, even a little, another caveat to that. I am really proud of the work that we're doing, and I've got family all over the country. And every time it comes up, because you know, it's a topic of conversation, schooling, what your kids are doing, I have a lot to say. So I'm real proud of what we're doing. And I just want to thank all of you guys here that I think we're way ahead of the curve, we're way ahead of the norm. And we've got some glitches, but we'll get them earned out. You know, the snapshot that we do now that gives us an opportunity to share and bring awareness to our community of where we are? We maybe, maybe need a newer version of that coming out of communications. I know Tiffany's going to kill me. Look, she has her thumbs up already. Where we're speaking to this type of statistics that Trustee Adams just mentioned, you know, and just a whole new snapshot on the new world in which we're living today. And then it always takes time for change. I've been full-time work from home since 2017, and I hated it at first. But today, I wouldn't want to go back in the office every day. I've gotten, it's actually sometimes even better. And they actually give more work out of me when I'm home all the time. So I think it's just going to take some time, and hopefully we'll get the kids back in the class sooner. But I hope we never lose this component of technology because as Ms. Bradford indicated earlier, kids love technology. Or it was Ms. Carter, the kids love that technology and so.
Absolutely. And that's, you made a great point. That's the point we really want to share with our families and our community, that we're not here saying that everything is perfect because it is not perfect. We all are learning. This is probably some of the most difficult teaching that teachers have had to do, and they're adjusting and they're making the best of it. But by no means are we reactive and by no means should they be disappointed in our district. We are actually leading in a lot of areas in terms of our plan and the work that our principals and leaders did over the summer. They should be proud of the work and with their feedback, we're going to continue to make improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrooks. And please present that to TEA because I know they are going to be contacting us, wanting to use our plan as an example statewide. So we look forward to that. Thank you. Our next item is an administrative update on the 2020-2021 school year plan. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Executive Chief of District Operations, Mark Miranda.
Hi, thank you, President Newhouse, members of the board, Dr. Watson. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen as well. And while I do that, hopefully you can see my screen, just a thumbs up maybe.
We can see it.
All right, great. So before I get into this, one of the things that, as I was listening to the previous conversation about engagement, that I just, now it's going to sound like I'm playing to the board. I promise you, I'm not. I'm so proud of our board too because the language in the conversation is all about the kids, and I just love that. And I just want you to know that it translates to staff. So everyone that responded to what you were asking, they have been very keenly aware, especially of the students that haven't, you know, that may be having trouble engaging. And so you heard about phone calls, you heard about all of the plans to get out really and to get into the neighborhood to be able to find students that maybe aren't engaged. One of the things that as we were having this, gives me the ability to receive a couple of texts and our assistant superintendents were reminding that with everything online, principals and assistant principals and assistant superintendents are able to join classes online and be able to peek in just to notice the engagement and to be able to monitor, not from a draconian way or anything like that, but to be able to see the interaction between the students and the teachers. And it's really been just kind of a neat thing to be able to see all of the engagement that's happening. So just, we're continuing to do that. And to that end, the presentation that I'm about to show you is going to help us maybe reengage some of those students. As you saw in the previous presentation, over the past months, we've been sharing our respond and reimagine and reopen plans as they've been being developed. And as you know, we started school remotely on August 17th, which is what we've been talking about. Tonight, we're like, we would like to share with you our plans for a return to in-person instruction. So to that end, just looking at the roadmap for this presentation, number one, it's going to take us through the related data and the background. We're going to then introduce our plan. We're going to walk a little bit deeper through what we're providing, the support that we're providing for our students with special needs. And then we're going to wrap, as I mentioned before, with an update on technology and a peek at some of the commitments that we have going forward. So we're going to start with the data, right? We've been looking at a lot of data, going all the way back to the spring semester and then over the summer. And some of the data that we've been looking at is coming out of Harris County and then our local data. And then we've had a couple of surveys that we wanted to show you some updates on as well. But first, let's take a look at some of the data points from Harris County's Department of Public Health. We monitor this. Remember that this is countywide, so it's in reference to more than four million residents in the county. So it's a big sample size of people when we look at the data from the county that we're really kind of paying attention to. So based on the August 31st entry, we've seen a few different data points. Number one, we've seen that new COVID cases in the more recent period. In the more recent period have trended up slightly, but they still remain below the maximum number that we were seeing um, on about August fourth. Some of the other data points that we've seen is that the fourteen-day average uh, positive tests have been trending down. We've seen the ICU population trend down slightly as well. And we've seen the hospital population uh, trend in the negative, which means that more patients are actually leaving the hospital than those that are going in. So that's some data from Harris County that's telling us that things are starting to turn maybe a little bit. Um, these two charts um, give you that a little bit more visually, right? So the percent positive COVID nineteen tests results for the day is what you see in that first chart. Um, and we get to see the trends there. So in that first chart, as you can see, the number of positive tests have trended down since the peak of about midsummer. And so we've seen the peak in midsummer, we've seen the seven-day rolling average, which is that green line. Um, that you see on the first chart is trending down um, as we go deeper into August. Hopefully that trend will continue. These are all positive signs on the county, um, the county-wide level. The second charge, chart, sorry, shows negative and positive COVID nineteen results by day. Uh, with the blue being negative and the red or the pink being positive, right? So the positive COVID nineteen results by day, um, and again, you can see the trend has dropped quite a bit since midsummer. Midsummer, the tests were peaking, the positive and negative results were peaking, and you see that that's um, starting to trend downwards. Um, on the county level, but we don't just look at county-wide data, we also look um, at local data and we have been doing this through um. Chief Colbreath and his team with the emergency management team have been looking um, at this by zip code and so. We've been able to also um, grab the information from the county at the zip code level for um, our school district. And what you see here is um, our highest populated zip code is seven, seven, three, seven, three. And if you can kind of see a little bit from that map, that's mostly on the eastern side um, of our school district, the population in that zip code. Um, is fifty-four thousand, six oh nine, um, and the number of active COVID cases within that fifty-four, six oh nine. Um, is about thirty-nine, um, currently active um, COVID cases. As we go a little bit more into the, into the data, what we see, you know, kind of from our highest zip code uh, is seven, seven, oh, seven, three. A population of about thirty-four thousand, um, seven hundred and ninety residents, there are eighty-three active cases, so that's about. Point two, three, eight percent uh, of the population in seven, seven, oh, seven, three are, are actively in that COVID case. So that, so that's some of the data that we're using to inform the decisions that we're, we're going to talk about um, in this presentation. Uh, some other data is um, a little bit over a month ago, we surveyed our parents to ask them several questions, but we asked them. Um, on this one, if they would like their students to return when appropriate in person or to remain at home. And so we actually shared this data with you before, but we've updated it, so this is gonna look a little bit different than what you may have seen before. Because we've updated this table um, to show uh, students or parents who did not respond to the survey. And we've actually defaulted them to in-person. Uh, and so you'll see the in-person number um, on this is up to, to about fifty-two point nine. Where the at-home uh, is around forty-seven point one for district-wide, so it's roughly fifty-fifty at-person and, and, and. Um, I'm sorry, that are selecting in-person uh, versus at-home, roughly about fifty-fifty. And as you'll see later on, we are, we do plan to give parents, um, continue to give parents options in this.
Miranda, can you, can you tell me why we didn't split the non-responders half and half? What was the methodology behind making them in-person?
Yeah, so if we were kind of in a normal school situation, those, those families would be in-person and as you're gonna see here in just a second. We're, we're still keeping the window open for them to make those decisions. Uh, and so as parents maybe see this plan going forward, they're still going to have the opportunity to say, you know what, my student's remote now. And we'd like them to stay remote, so we will be able to keep them remote. This, this has given uh, probably our campuses as we go forward as well. An idea of the higher end that would potentially be able to come in-person, so that also helps us to be able to plan on that.
Ms. Durant, the other reason why, to extend that a little bit more as well, is if you remember during the time of our survey. Parents would not have the opportunity to transfer from at-home to in-person until at the end of the grading cycle. And so we wanted to make sure that the parents' choice um, was at the forefront, which would allow them to make decision to go to um, remote. Anytime that they wanted to, but we didn't want to penalize them because at the time, we didn't, they might be, maybe they didn't respond because they didn't have technology to even get the survey. So we didn't want to penalize the parent or the child, so we opted them into in-person and then once we contact them, they would have an opportunity to switch back if they want.
So at our last board meeting, um, you also asked us to, to take a look at those parents who originally in the first survey selected that they wanted their students to be in-person. Um, when that in-person was available. And so communications indicated that they would do a pulse survey of those parents who selected in-person and we have done that and actually. This is really just hot off the presses from communications and research because that ended this week, I think yesterday. That survey ended and we have the information now. Again, these are parents who selected in-person at the beginning. And we went back to, to check their pulse. Okay, now things have changed. Where are you now? And specifically, where are you in relationship to potentially beginning in-person instruction on September fourteenth? Uh, and as you'll see in a second, September fourteenth is a significant date. Uh, and so what we have here out of the respondents, there were six thousand, six hundred and sixty-four respondents to this particular survey. And what we have is roughly about fifty-six percent of the parents in that in-person category. That are saying that they're either comfortable or extremely comfortable with being able to come back in-person by September fourteenth. And so diving a little bit deeper into that data, we can see it by, um, and we could really cut this in a number of different ways, but we can see it by um. By grade level, and so from early childhood all the way to twelfth grade, so. Um, some interesting takeaways from this are that parents with early childhood and pre-K students seem to be the most uncomfortable. With the mid-September date, uh, but across the grade levels, uh, more than fifty percent. Uh, of those, again, those parents who selected in-person seem to be either comfortable or extremely comfortable. So the least comfortable may be, maybe parents with the smaller children. Uh, but across the board, it looks more like fifty percent roughly are either comfortable or extremely comfortable, so we're, we're in that fifty-fifty range. With these parents. Um, to go to another way to look at this, this is by campus, um, and this is the elementary schools by campus. By elementary school by campus, we have a variety of different outcomes depending on which campus you're um, interested in or, or, or looking at. Just a couple of examples, Anderson, for example, uh, seems to be extremely comfortable. Um, they have over sixty percent of their families that are either in that, that light green or that green, which is comfortable or extremely comfortable. Um, and then maybe on the other side of the spectrum, you can see here, um, Sawyer's Elementary School, which seems to be leaning maybe in the different direction. So let it hover here just a little bit, um, so you can see that. And so by secondary campus, um, secondary campuses uh, most appear to be somewhere in the middle, so this looks. Uh, a little bit more like fifty-fifty. Um, there are some campuses that, that have a slightly higher uncomfortable. Um, group, I think the highest in there might be Bammel Middle School, but Bammel Middle School also has quite a few that are in that comfortable, so. This um, at the secondary campuses appear to be um, almost in a fifty-fifty. And again, remember, this pulse survey was done for parents um, who have previously selected that they wanted their students um, in-person. So a little, a little more background on how we arrived at the decisions that we're gonna be sharing tonight. Um, really our path to that. Uh, so going all the way back to May and really probably even sooner than that, we've been working in this mode since March, as you know, going all through the spring. Um, and then through the summer, but, but back in May, um, Spring ISD's twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one scenario-based planning process launched. Um, and as you heard in the previous um, presentation, we had more than a hundred campus and central administration leaders involved in planning. So we have been planning, um, a lot of planning since May and there's been a lot of hard work from a lot of different people. Um, the really great thing is that that was a really collaborative effort. Um, across departments, across schools, lots of people were involved in the planning that began in May, in May. Well, about May twelfth to twenty-first, uh, we really started rolling out with a bunch of T E A guidelines. Um, and one of the guidelines and, and the guidance that we received from T E A during that, that time period. Um, was resources for intercessional calendars. And those intercessional calendars were really put together or, or recommended by T E A in response to COVID nineteen. And anticipation of potential closures, closures. So T E A said, hey, try intercessional calendars. Again, a response to COVID nineteen anticipated potential closures. Uh, some things have changed since then because we're more remote now, we have the ability to do remote. Um, but that's where we were in the middle of May. Um, towards the end of May, Spring ISD prepared and have actually approved uh, through the board an intercessional calendar for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. As we moved forward to June, we then went out to parents and we said, parents, we have a couple of options for you. Option one. Uh, is that safety first in-person, that's the group that I just showed you from the survey that we just showed. Um, but then the option two, which is still available, is that remote option. Hey, I'm a parent and I want to keep my children at home. Um, until further notice, it seems. Um, and so. About mid-July or actually early part of July, July seventh, T E A issued its first guidelines for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. And this is a real key point, they emphasized at that time the need for an on-campus option for all students. So some of the plans, remember for May, may have not had that, but by the early part of July, T E A was saying, we're gonna need to have. Daily on-campus learning available um, to those parents who need that. By July seventeenth, T E A had issued additional guidelines and we actually came forward to the board with a couple of waivers, if you recall from our last board meeting. Uh, one of the waiver, waivers was gonna allow us to continue um, an additional four weeks of transition period. So from August seventeenth, we had four weeks and after August seventeenth, starting in that, remember that you saw that from an earlier slide, September fourteenth. We would be able to start a new four-week period um, of, of transition period. Uh, the other waiver was to be able to allow high schools to continue in that hybrid option. When you look at the high school campuses, they have a larger population and so continuing um, in a hybrid option for in-person allows us to continue. Uh, to safely distance um, uh, and to be able to, to do that. Um, is gonna give us that from the waiver uh, that T E A has provided. So what is our plan, right? What is our, number, number one, we're gonna look at return to work because we're asking um. Not a return to work necessarily because we've been working um, all the way since March and a lot of people have been working twenty-four, seven since then. But this is really return to the classroom and classrooms that will have children in them. Um, and so we'll be looking at that here in just a second, but also then the return to school plan as we go forward. So again, return to work means return to work with classrooms that have students in them. Um, and so to, in order to be able to do that, um, we had to look really closely at childcare supports. We've heard from other school districts that have had kind of, everybody is in kind of the same position that we're in. Uh, this is not unique to Spring ISD, this is everybody everywhere. Um, and we've had um, some real good responses from our campuses to be able to help us with two different categories. Um, of employees, some employees that have students enrolled in Spring ISD. And then there are employees that have students that are not enrolled in Spring ISD. For those that have students here in Spring ISD, we actually have three options. One option is that everyday rotation, so they'll, they'll be able to bring their students uh, to campus on an everyday rotation. But for both the enrolled in Spring ISD parents and the not enrolled in Spring ISD, we do have some campus learning labs. Um, and those are actually ongoing right now. Um, when we started school in August seventeenth. Uh, Dr. Watson and I and, and others, assistant superintendents have been traveling uh, to some of our campus and we've noticed because we allowed. Um, teachers to teach remotely from campus if they so chose uh, to bring some of their um, students here. And so that's that third option of the parent-supervised accommodation and so. Um, it was amazing to see that happening in real time with teachers teaching and their own students quietly working on their own assignments in a corner. Um, and just kind of amazing to be able to see that throughout, how it's been really a family affair when it comes to uh, bringing. Um, our employees back and being able to do that. So we have multiple options available. One of the other things um, that our um, Equity and Innovations Department have been doing too. Is really looking to partner with childcare supports in our community. Uh, and so here are three examples of childcare supports for employees that need additional childcare options. We have the Lender Young Learners Academy, we have the Y M C A and our Little Red Schoolhouse um, that are open. Um, in many cases, six, uh, six days a week, five days a week, that are offering um, options for our. Um, our staff that need childcare options and so we have that available for um, our staff as well. One of the other things is, um, it's not business as usual because we're doing a lot, as we've been talking about in the last presentation, a lot of synchronous and asynchronous learning has been happening. Uh, but we, we didn't want to leave our uh, professionals behind and so we've provided lots and lots of professional development. Some that you've actually seen in previous board meetings. Um, we've been training and teaching and doing that as a team. We provided six hundred and sixty-three hours of virtual training uh, up to this point and the main focus of that virtual training. Has been protocols and norms to operate in a virtual environment. Um, and the expectations uh, to be able to do so as well. And, and ensuring that all of our remote learning activities are really professional. And you saw a great example of that earlier in the last presentation with the, uh, the small video of the uh. The teacher over at Decane High School um, giving his lesson. So that was kind of a neat thing to be able to see that. We, he is one of the ones that Dr. Watson and I saw live. Um, I think that was day one and there was instruction already happening on day one and it looked almost exactly like you saw in that video. Up, standing and being very interactive with his students. Also from a, an employee and really from a, from a student standpoint too, we're gonna be able to partner with Axiom Case Manager. Uh, to be able to do some system checks before, uh, symptom checks before um, faculty, staff and, and even students arrive to um, campus. Um, so there's more to come on this, we're working with them to be able to have the check-in to work um, app available. They'll also be doing contact tracing, so a, a medical uh, company that's gonna be able to do that, Axiom Medical. They're gonna provide case investigation for us, uh, contact tracing and contact support, so we're really looking forward. Uh, to getting this in place as soon as possible and again, you'll be hearing more um, on that as that's um, getting ready to roll out very soon. So here's the big part, right? Return to school plan. What is our return to school plan gonna look like and, and where are we going? So as you remember from our last board meeting, we had two waivers. Um, and we've already been in that first four-week transition waiver that had already happened on August seventeenth, all students started remote. Um, and they're, they're completing their remote learning and that's happening, that was allowed with a, with a, a previous waiver. And then beginning September fourteenth, we start our second four-week transition waiver. Remember at the last board meeting, um, we put that in place and we said we would be able to do that. So September fourteenth, we have a phase in for on-campus in-person instruction and that's gonna begin. And it's really important to note that that's going to be required. And so kind of circle that because T E A is requiring us to have some in-person instruction during the second four-week transition waiver. T E A is requiring some in-person instruction during this second four-week transition waiver. We talked a little bit about that. Uh, at the last board meeting, so what is that gonna look like?
Can you um, tell me what some means?
Um, that's a great question. Um, it's not dictated to us every class and every grade level. Um, it's actually pretty wide open for us to be able to, to be able to have um, in-person instruction and it's a little bit different between. K-eight um, and high school, I believe. Um, so I don't know, I know Jeremy was helping us with that, I don't want to necessarily put him on the spot, but if he had any input on that as well.
And so, so basically, uh, as Mark said, it's pretty wide open, but the, the way we've looked at it is there needs to be. Instruction happening somewhere in the district every day. That doesn't mean that uh, any particular student has to be getting five days of instruction or even that, and, and. That, that any particular campus has to have instruction, but somewhere in the district, there needs to be instruction happening each day of the week. I think you're muted.
It's not gonna put um, the parents' options at risk when they've chosen at home, okay?
And remember, this is only for the parents that choose in-person.
Okay.
If they choose remote, they can stay on remote as long as they want to, but for parents that choose in-person. This is giving them a voice and an opportunity to come back without us saying, no, you must stay remote for the year.
I, I think the real purpose of this is uh, T E A wanting to see an actual transition occur. So that districts couldn't just stay a hundred percent remote for an, an additional four weeks.
So we make this transition while remaining at our level red in terms of our, our, our little meter thing?
Yes, and so based upon the data, you'll see that, uh, basically the data that Mark shared, shared earlier, you, you noticed that the. Numbers from Harris County have gone down and then the numbers for Spring ISD um, specific zip codes within our community is extremely low. And so we're gonna. And so we're going to be changing that color. So you're going to be seeing this next slide that Mark is, which really is more of a yellow type of model.
So one of the things that you've also seen from other school districts is that there are some other school districts that are going to begin opening on September 8th. And when they do so, they're going to open fully with the remote and the full in-person options all at the same time. And so we've had even some feedback from campuses or other school districts that have done that. And in some cases, it's went well, I'm sure, but it also has been a challenge. So our plan's a little bit different. We're going to truly use the phase-in approach beginning September 14th. And the way we're going to do that is we're going to begin with our students that have special needs. So our K students with special needs and our early childhood special education would begin to transition back on September 14th. And again, this is for the parents who have chosen an in-person option. As Dr. Watson just said, if you're remote, you stay remote. This doesn't impact you. If you want to stay remote, you stay remote, right? So for those parents that are ready for their children to come back, this is what we would be providing for them. So actually, let me back up just a little bit, just to give you another thing that's happening. Next week, for PVA and athletics, we are going to allow them after school, right, to be able to begin some activities for strength and conditioning, some different things as they can begin to prepare for their seasons and different things that are happening with them. Again, voluntary, not something that we're making mandatory, but that'll begin next week. And then September 14th, we'll begin with our K students, our early childhood special ed, and then pre-K, grade one and grade two. And so when we look at the data, we know that being able to be in front of a teacher, while all the great things that we've said about remote learning are true and the interaction is true, we also heard from you, the board, we've heard from some of our parents as well, that that in-person instruction, especially for our younger grades, is really important. And we want to be able to give our elementary schools time by doing this weeks at a time to be able to transition, so they'll be able to do that. So the September 14th, those grades. The very next week, September 21st, we're going to ramp more grades into. So we'll include grade three, four, and five at the elementary level, and we'll begin at the middle school level with grade six and seven, and at the high school level with grade nine and 10. That would be September 21st. Then September 28th, the third group will transition in. That'll be the final grade eight at middle school and grades 11 and 12 at the high school level. Here's just another way to look at it, so you can kind of visualize this a little bit more. So again, that September 14th, remember, we're required to have, required to have some in-person instruction. This plan fulfills those requirements in all of our waivers. And so that transition, one, the K students, the early childhood, we talked a little bit, and we'll have some more conversations about special ed later in this presentation. So those students, the lower-level elementary, and then the rest of elementary, middle school will begin, high school will begin. And then by September 28th, all of those that have selected in-person will be here. Part of the plan is to get our students on campus before the end of the month. We felt like that would be kind of a prudent thing to do, to be able to begin this transition.
Ms. Miranda, I'm interested if the ninth-grade centers are ready.
Yep, so the Spring High School Ninth Grade Center and the Decane High School Ninth Grade Center are ready. As we had mentioned before, Westfield Ninth Grade Centers is a little, will be ready later. It's not currently ready. And so it's still in that position as we speak. The other two are ready to go. Their administrators are there. Next week, as administrators begin to roll in, they'll be on campus as well.
So they already have their furniture and all their equipment and everything?
Yes, absolutely.
My goodness, they've been busy, and they're going to be busy, aren't they?
They're going to be very busy, right? I don't think any of us have stopped being busy, so that's, but yeah, we're definitely, we're going to be busy in a new way. Let's put it that way.
I just want to reiterate one more time on the other slide. I know we have a lot of participants tonight. As we're transitioning back, I know Mark has reiterated several times, it's only for the in-person. And even when you go back and look at the poll survey that we had, there are parents that chose in-person who are still uncomfortable. They still have that choice. That just further means the number of students on campuses will be even more decreased as a result of that. And so when you look at this, sometimes you think, "Oh, my gosh, we're going to bring all the kids back." It's not all the kids. If it was around 50/50, based upon the survey of the 50% in-person, there was about 50% of that that still did not want to come back, and so the numbers are still small.
So I might be jumping ahead of you, Chiefs, so just let me know if I am. But where are we in terms of our teaching staff that might have some concerns about coming back? Do we have enough teachers that are ready to come back? Don't have issues with maybe a compromised immune system or any of those issues?
You want to take that?
Mark, you may not.
I might have been jumping ahead.
Let's do that at the end.
Oh, did you want me to minimize, Dr. Watson?
What, you want her to answer that now or at the end?
If it's part of the regular presentation, I can wait.
It's not. Julie, go ahead to answer that. Mark, if you can minimize.
Good evening, trustees. At this point, we have some employees who have requested accommodations. We have been able to meet and take care of all of the requests that have been made. But the majority of the teachers and central office staff are primed. They're ready to return. Our adults will be returning on Tuesday, the 8th, and we are ready to go. We do not have any identified areas where we cannot cover or accommodate for the students that are coming into the building, nor do we have any areas in the central office where we can't accommodate to complete our work. We are well covered.
I think you've already answered that, but is there accommodation in the event they need to bring their children?
Absolutely.
Oh, yes. One of the options that Chief Miranda showed earlier was the opportunity, even if people wanted to bring their students in to their office areas with them. So we've set protocols around so that they can close their doors, just like Dr. Watson is doing every day with his son. We have many of our employees who have chosen to take that option. They are bringing their children and their devices, and they're coming into their offices.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and reshare my screen. Yeah, we're doing, we're doing all we can really to be able to support. And so one of the things that we're also doing, we know that it's going to look a little bit different, especially when we start having students in class. So there will be some teachers that are going to be doing concurrent instruction. This is teachers that are simultaneously supporting in-person and remote students. We know that there's going to be, just with anything, there's going to be a little transition period for that. But we're confident in our teachers. Some, like the teacher that you saw earlier in the video, is ready and well-prepared for that. He's already standing up, you know, behind his screen, and so he can actively engage with an in-person and an online group if one of his classes is like that. And so we will have that for some of our teachers. They'll be providing safety first in-person, and they will be providing empowered learning at home. Just anecdotally, my daughter's in college, and her college professors are doing this right now. And so sometimes she chooses to go to class, and sometimes she chooses to be online. And I'm like, "As long as you're keeping up with your grades, you can make that decision," and she's able to do that. And her teachers are able to instruct in both ways, and we're pretty confident that ours are going to be able to really step up. This is new for everyone, but thankfully, over the last year or so, through our BON program, we were able to install new projectors in our classrooms. And so we have equipment like that that's available to us so that our teachers are going to be able to utilize that equipment to their advantage in this model. As we said before, as we move towards the parents, we wanted to allow them to continue to have flexibility, right? At one point, as Dr. Watson had mentioned, we were talking about maybe not allowing them to do that until grading periods changed, but we've thought better. We've received feedback from different people, and we said, "You know what? We're going to be able to just open this up." So changes to student learning options will be available throughout the school year. This provides the most flexibility, as I mentioned, to parents. And so available throughout the year, parents who are safety-first in-person in that category, and they want to go to remote, right? So they're in the option of in-person, but they want to go to the remote. They can do that. It may take a couple of days just for us to make sure that the rosters are in process, but this is the easiest transition. Right now, they're remote. And for example, if they don't want to come back on the 14th, and their group is one of the ones that we're saying are ready to come back on the 14th, they can continue to be remote, and so they can do that. On the opposite side, there may be some parents who are feeling more comfortable, and you saw in the survey earlier. And there may be other parents that are more comfortable that are saying, "I'm empowered learning at home, but I'm ready for my students to be in-person." I'm not going to make any comments about why they would be ready for their students to go back to school, but some of them are going to be in that category, and so we're going to allow them to do that as well. It may take a little more time for that, because we need to get them rostered so that they can be on the in-person class, and we can be prepared for that. One of the things, as we looked at the roadmap for this whole thing, that we also wanted to share was how some of our students with special needs are being accommodated and supported during this whole entire process. So for this next section of slides, I'm going to pass this over to Katara Bradford, our chief academic officer, to lead you through this section.
Thank you. You can go ahead to the next slide. Good evening. We know that remote learning is definitely a hot topic, but especially special education has definitely been not only locally and across our region and state, but nationally. And so I'm excited to share with you all a special education update, starting, of course, with our priorities. We do consistently focus on student-level learning outcomes, and we set our priorities based on, of course, our board goals, our district improvement plan, the strategic support plan, and also plans that we submit to TEA ongoing each year. So we do self-assessments. Special education certainly has the unique responsibility of focusing both on instructional supports and serving students as well as remaining compliant with the myriad of local, state, and federal performance indicators. So we've made significant improvements across, along the way, but we do know that we continue to promote improvement and really getting down to ensuring that all students are excelling and learning. So we do this through self-monitoring, as well as ongoing professional learning and meetings with all levels of teachers, paraprofessionals, school administrators, and also here centrally. We do have, what you saw earlier, that special education procedures manual and our compliance manuals, which are ever-growing, so that we keep really abreast of ongoing changes, but that we're also very reflective of our practices. Our priorities do include our academic goals, of course, also looking around equity, which we know is very important to the board, and reducing disciplinary removals for all of our special populations, as well as one of our ultimate goals in special education is to close the achievement gap. We know that students are identified as having a learning disability, and what's special about special education is that we go in and we are able to provide individualized education plan geared towards each student's learning disability. This year, more than ever, the team has really been focused on developing and supporting families and giving them resources, hearing from them. And you'll hear from us throughout this presentation of how we are connecting with our parents in some ways more than we did before, when that ongoing, through the use of technology, through evening sessions, our evening help desk, to just stay connected with our families. Who are our students that are eligible for special education? In Spring ISD, we have increased the number of students to represent 10% of our overall student population at a little over 3,500 eligible students, and this is up from 8.4% just a few years ago. So the information on the chart on the right shows you the number of students under each primary disability category allowed by the state of Texas. Also, remember that we do have some students who are eligible under two or three categories. So a student may be identified as having a speech impairment as well as a learning disability. And on the left-hand side, you can see how that 10% of our student population breaks down across multiple areas, and even who are taking our STAR assessment, our STAR alt, our end-of-course assessments at all of our levels. Students do have to be referred first, and then they are assessed, professionally assessed, before they are then eligible for special education services. So this next chart shows the number of students eligible for special education divided by ethnicity. So we are definitely always looking at equity across our percentages, and TEA has found that we don't have any areas of significant disproportionality. One area where we may be approaching, and it's actually a small area, is in the number of Pacific Islander students who are also eligible as students with autism. So that's very interesting. If you see that population, it's a small percentage, but that is a group that we are mindful of, of these students who are identifying as Pacific Islanders and who are also qualifying as students with autism. But our assessment team has this year really included several trainings to ensure that we remove any conscious or unconscious bias, unconscious bias, cultural bias from our assessment practices, and this includes our diagnosticians as well as our LSSPs. So really looking at our eligible students, and you'll see that some of them, 22% of our students are duly-coded as English language learners and students receiving special education support. So that's a really interesting statistic right there. We also do have our students who are participating in our CTE programs, as well as students who are duly-coded, again, as having a disability, a learning disability of some sort, as well as qualifying for dyslexia. So it's a very unique group of students, which is why we always do focus on, you know, what is special about special education and really developing those individual education plans for our students. So what does that look like as far as campus support? We really centrally support our campuses in three primary areas. Looking at, our main role is that students are provided effective services in the least restrictive environment. So we look at every variety of options, create creative solutions around students' placement and where they're receiving their instructional services, who's providing those instructional services. And so we really focus on IEP implementation, looking at the fidelity of the implementation. So how well are we meeting those goals and objectives as well as monitoring? So it's always a balance between instruction and compliance. Also, looking across several service providers to meet the individual needs of students, and we'll look at some of those service providers as well, and always using data and to drive our decision-making to keep students in the least restrictive environment, following that federal law. But, you know, ongoing data monitoring to help us make decisions regarding students' learning. So when we look at our services, we look at it across a continuum. On the left-hand side of this chart, you will see that the majority of our students, most of our students who qualify for special education do receive their services and monitoring within the general education environment. So on the left, you can go, you can look from top all the way down to the bottom, that majority of our students receive monitoring and support within the general education environment. As we move closer over to the right, our goal is always to provide services in the least respective restrictive environment, as well as providing students with access to the general education curriculum, as well as their general education peers. So a third-grade student receiving special education services needs to have time with a third-grade student who is in general education environment. So in the middle, we do have students who would then have flex between general education environments and services and supports, and more specialized environments, services, and supports. And so this could be around academic needs, social skills, or behavior skills. And then moving over to the right is where we then would be in a more structured environment where the student is receiving the most of their day instruction, their time, their learning in a specialized environment, and this is a smaller percentage of our students. And so these classes are focusing on functional skills, social skills, prerequisite skills. Sometimes we call them life skills, and they may have inclusive behavior supports. They may have access to, of course, general education programs. A lot of our technology applications are enjoyed by these students, as well as just that reinforcement schedule. So they may need more frequent check-ins, more frequent rewards to reinforce those behaviors, until finally, like the smallest percentage of our students, which we do have some in and out of district placement. So we call these more low-incidence disabilities, and these are the students in which we are primarily focused on their return back to school, and we have heard from families. And so this is the student where, in these functional life skills, that we can provide a lot of support, bringing them back face-to-face. Across our service providers, this breaks down who delivers the instruction, the accommodations, the supports. And so you'll see the column of the numbers of teachers that we have across all of our different support resources, as well as the number of paraprofessionals. And so you'll see, for example, we have eight teachers that support across the district, our students who are homebound or need support in a hospital setting. We also, you can see our speech and language pathologist, our early childhood education. When you look at the students that we've been able to have actually town hall When you look at the students that we've been able to have actually town hall meetings for our case students, which is the community academic structured education, those students that are engaged in that program, as well as our early childhood special ed, hearing from those families. We knew that while some students are thriving and even some students receiving special education support, we do have some families who really do depend on us to provide some of those hand-over-hand supports or just that time-consuming or labor-intensive support. And so we are prioritizing with those families who have said they're ready for their students to come back face-to-face. We are ready and willing and ready to receive them in both our case and our early childhood special education program. So that's really where we've been gearing up, as well as, of course, their general education peers, which are starting around the same time as well. But we really did just have a listening ear of, you know, it's a lot of work. And some of us have that calling, and we went into education, and so we're excited to connect back with our students. If you look at the next slide, these are more of our related service providers, thank you. And they work with our related services as well as our assessment. And you'll see the number of full-time staff that we have across our diagnosticians, our therapists. Of course, all of these supports depend on the student's disability in which the R committee then comes and makes the recommendation. So vocational coaches, our transition specialists who really help with students who are transitioning, especially we service a population of students that are over 18, so are 18-plus, so 18 to 22. But these are additional staff members that we have to help us both assessing students, to help them qualify, and then all along the way, depending on their disability and depending on the R committee recommendation. So you can see those numbers there of staff members. And we do follow staffing guidelines. There is no strict formula for special education. It is very flexible. But we do have staffing guidelines that we have followed. Of course, we look at Region Four, our region area, what their recommendations are, what districts around us are using. We look at the Texas Education Agency's guidance, and when they send us, you know, recommendations as well as the Harris County Department of Education federally to determine really what works. And it's not a one-to-one match all the time. But in general, these are our staffing guidelines. So you can see across our inclusion or co-teaching, that would be on that service. All the way over to the left, most of their instruction is provided in a general education environment, onto programs that we have for students with autism, onto our blended early childhood special ed. So we have broken down by our overarching kind of service providers and placements, some staffing guidelines. And then to continue that, these would be staffing guidelines for a more structured setting. So students who need more structured support in which they're receiving the majority of their instruction and learning time in a specialized classroom, so we have these specialized guidelines. But we do know that our committee may say for a student that is in adaptive behavior that they spend some of their time in a general education classroom. Or a student in that, and a peer in the same adaptive behavior classroom may spend more of their time in the adaptive behavior classroom, and they may need additional supports. So we really do, of course, that data monitoring, feedback from parents, not just in the R, but ongoing feedback from teachers, feedback from students, as well as, you know, just looking at what's working and going back to our overarching goals for students. In addition to their I E P goals and objectives, also looking at their overall academic gains and social skills gains, help us to follow these staffing guidelines. Of course, none of this would be possible, especially right now, without a strong technology support. So I'm going to hand it back over to Mark to share our technology update.
I have, I have a question real quick before you transfer it back over. This is Trustee Davis. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My question is this, and maybe, maybe may not be answered tonight. I know in the past, we had a few students, I know one in particular, that was going across district in Aldine, because we could not provide services for that student. I do not know whether that student is still in our school system, have graduated or not. So my question is this, can we, can we provide all the services as needed for the students in our district, no matter what their needs may be? We had one student that was all, that was one of Aldine for services, we did not provide it. I know you may not recall it, but I recall it clearly. We had this conversation before. You cannot answer it tonight. Just get back with me on Tuesday.
We can answer it. We do have some students who are in out-of-district placements. So we do have some service providers that are out of district. We have, for example, our deaf education program is supported out of district. But we also still have on our director of special education, Ms. Ayanna LeBron, who can answer that question?
Yes. So I think you're talking about the, the co-op that we have with Aldine with regards to our deaf education.
Yes, yes. Yes, that's exactly right. Do you have, well, I guess I may have missed a slide. But how many students we have in that category? I know we had one or two in the past. So how many do you have in that category at this time? If you can answer that. If not, just tell me Tuesday, just.
We have about, I'd say roughly about 30 students.
Oh, really? Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. No worries.
Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and continue on with the technology update. Again, remember going back to the transition to in-person, one of the questions that was asked a little bit earlier was about technology and kind of where we stand with our technology. So let me get to this next slide. So, so far, we have distributed 21,232 Chromebooks. 21,232 Chromebooks, and we pretty much provided a Chromebook to anyone who's needed one. We still have over 3,000 Chromebooks remaining in our inventory. And what we've been doing with that is as campuses have been identifying additional needs, we've provided those Chromebooks to those campuses to be able to distribute those on individual basis. We actually have had multiple Chromebook distribution times. In some cases, if you drove down Ella, you would have seen long lines for Chromebook distribution as we were distributing these prior to the start of school. And so we're really excited about that. Again, over 3,000, and just to let you know, we also have another 9,000-plus Chromebooks that are on the way from the first order, and then another, another, an additional 9,700 from an additional order. So we have more Chromebooks on the way. We've distributed 21,000, and pretty much every, every parent or student who needed one at this point has one. Some of the Chromebooks that will be on their way will not only support other parents, but also replenish some of the Chromebooks at campuses as well, potentially. We've also had 1,000 Wi-Fi hotspots with 3,000 more on the way, but let me talk about the 1,000 first. We did a survey early on, and in that survey, that question was asked how, if they have reliable connectivity, reliable internet connectivity. We took that survey, and it was by student, and we took that survey, and we moved it to by parent. And we found out that there was a little over 1,000 unique households that needed a hotspot. So we have distributed the 1,000 hotspots. They were delivered to campuses for distribution. I just have a really neat story in this. We distributed those 1,000 hotspots, and out of those 1,000, 70 families, 70 of our families, and this, this one is really good. 70 of our families said, you know what, we've, we've been able to handle it. We've been able to take care of it. They actually gave us the hotspot back and said, we're good now. Give this hotspot to somebody else that needs it. So that was just really kind of an awesome thing to be able to hear from our families to do that. And so we had 70 more out of the 1,000 that we could distribute to others, other parents who needed it. We have an additional 3,000 hotspots on the way. I was going to mention back from that earlier survey, which had a really high response rate. I think, you know, in the high 20,000-plus responses to that survey. Out of that, there were only 1,100 families in the category who said they did not have reliable internet access. What we're finding is that our apartment complexes do a really good job of having that available to our parents. And so again, there are 3,000 more on the way, and we'll be, they're actually not on the way. They're here. And we're preparing those in the I T department and getting ready to deliver those to campuses to be distributed on an as-needed basis as well.
And Mark, once again, this is our Trustee Davis. I want to tell you, your team, thank you.
You went, you went back on mute, Mr. Davis.
I had a penalty from this, we talked to me this week about one of the Chromebook, and you guys reacted within hours. I want to say thank you. All my colleagues know you guys are doing great work and taking care of our parents and our community. You know, being a part of, of the state board, the task, we are legislative board. I hear various stories and crazy stories about different districts that are already having problems with Chromebooks. And once again, my colleagues know we, we took actions early on. Make sure we had our technology.
You slipped back into.
To you guys, thank you.
Thank you, Captain Davis. Appreciate it. And good point. Thank you, board, as well, because we did this early on. One of the things that Jeff Corman in I T was, was telling us, and I mentioned this before, because we got on this early, we were able to get Chromebooks through the supply chain where other school districts are still struggling with getting some of those Chromebooks through the supply chain. So kudos to the board for freeing up some money for us to be able to do this. Truly a team effort between all of us. And so with that being said, as we wrap up with a couple more slides on this presentation, we are still living in a COVID-19 world, and so we are talking about bringing students back. But we know that we are living in that COVID-19 world. So there are some commitments and wanted to give our emergency management, our communications department really partnering together on how to keep everybody abreast as to where we are when it comes to COVID-19 in our community. And so you see on the screen right now kind of the process between what to do. If we have a case at a campus, the communications team will be helping to prepare. Communications, as always, to, for the general notification from that standpoint. And emergency management is going to be working closely with the principals to ensure that our close contacts are also being notified. Remember, we're going to have a partner in Acxiom Medical to be able to help us with this entire process. But we plan to be very communicative in this as we go forward and continue to be that. And to that end, communications has created this dashboard. We are going to be required, I do believe, and Tiffany could correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe we're required to, to track this and to put this out. And so they've created this great dashboard to be able to give us, and you can actually toggle and filter by campus and be able to see where we are in terms of staff members, students that are currently positive, have tested positive, and those members that have reported testing positive totally since August 17th, since the campus or since school started. So we do plan to be transparent when it comes to these things as we go forward. So that concludes the presentation. We've been answering questions along the way, but we'd be happy to answer any more questions that you may have.
Did we, did your presentation discuss how we will work with, if there are issues with the Chrome tablets? Like who's going to handle that? How do the parents contact you? And have there been any particular specific issues that have been identified with the Chromebooks?
There, there was a very specific issue with some of the older, with some of the Chromebooks that we were actually able to address very recently. I think Jeff Corman is online, but I don't know if he's available to, uh. Can you check, Jeremy? Because he has a really good update, and the reason I'm saying that, probably putting him on the spot a little bit, but I think he has a pretty good update about the Chromebooks. If he's, if not, then I can.
I don't, I don't see him unless he's on under a different name.
Yeah. So early on, there, there were a few hiccups, not very many, but we did hear a few hiccups in terms of the, the logging on to the Chromebooks. And so the Chromebook devices themselves have been updated. And so we are happy to report that those issues that some of the parents were having with logging on to Chromebooks has been corrected. And so logging on to the actual device, we feel that we're, we're pretty good to go there as well. We do have help support. Our campuses are supporting. We've had ongoing help from the school district as well with different things related to remote learning as we go forward. We still have parents with username issues. We don't, we don't want to say that everything's perfect. And so we continue to address logging in, which is a big one. But since August 17th, we've continued to have those things that we're addressing through helplines. And now campuses are really picking up on that as well.
Mark, will you minimize your screen?
Absolutely.
Presentation?
Thank you.
Chief, how do you, how do you access this, this COVID dashboard? Is there a link on the website?
It's, it's launching tonight. We're going to be launching it with our, our community tonight. The data is going to be from August 17th, which was the first day for schools that we opened. We opened remotely, but August 17th will be the day that we're tracking, will be tracking cumulative as well as giving the date when we're notified of COVID-19 cases. And as Mark mentioned, you'll be able to filter by campus too as well. It's a bubble type map. So as you saw, the bubbles on those, those are the campuses, are our facilities. We're including our facilities as well, but we are launching tonight. There will be a web article. We're working on that as well as communicating with both our staff and families. We're preparing right now for staff communicate on it.
How often is that updated?
That's a great question. Thanks to our wonderful research and accountability department, we are actually working with a dashboard that will nightly update. So as we worked, there was two slides that Mark was sharing with you, and I think the big, that section is commitment to transparent communications. And you, you guys, I know you receive lots of communications from us, but we've always had that belief in the district is to communicate with our families. So we do want our community, at that school community, if there's a case on their campus, we want them to receive that email notification from us first, and then, but nightly it'll update the, the dashboard. So it'll also be updated on the dashboard, and we've been working through all those processes with our emergency management team.
I have a question. Thank you. I had a question around, back to, a little bit back to technology. Do we have a help desk or when parents are having technical or students are having technical issues? What's that process and what's our hold time or time to respond?
Yeah, we do, we do have a help desk, and I'm, I'm kind of looking over at Katara. I know that we.
Yes.
We're transitioning that help desk over to.
We do. So we have multiple help desk opportunities. From March through August, we ran it centrally during this, during the school day. Now we have actually given campuses positions for additional instructional support staff. So they all have a digital learning coordinator at each campus who is now part of their campus help desk support. So each campus kind of has a little, slightly different way. Some of them have it on a landing page where they can click into a link, and it takes families to an open Google Meet hangout type environment where they can ask questions, or there's a specific number that parents can reach out to. We have a central help desk. We actually extended the hours, so now we're providing evening support. So from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., we really heard that there was a need for, you know, families to call in after hours. We were ending it at 5:00. So now we have that evening central support, which we do have in partnership with our student support services. So there's multilingual staff available. There's the instructional technology staff. So that regardless of what the parent would need, whether it's academic, or it's just help me log in across English and Spanish, it's available in the evenings as well as now campus-based support during the day.
We know what our A H T, the average hold time is?
Well, it varies. I don't know. We might have a report on that, you know. We did have our, like, maybe 17 to 25 staff members, especially when we were just all working at home. And that kind of became their full-time job to answer the line. And I know like on the first day of school, we may have had a spike or the week before. So it varies depending on, you know, just if we're, if there's a, you know, the, the first day of school, the first day of summer school, those times are higher. But we really now have it down to, it's very manageable. Haven't heard anything, you know, we'll hear when, whenever it's a long wait time. So now it's pretty much as calls are rolling in, we're able to answer them immediately.
Okay.
Did you, so I didn't hear a number in all of that.
Yeah, so we don't have, yeah, yeah, we don't have a metric to say that someone is holding. I'm, I'll let you know that we've, you know, through elevates and through Facebook comments, where I read some parents saying they've been on call for an hour. I've heard some saying they've been on, waiting on hold for, and no one's answered the phone, and they've called back, and the schools have called them. And so those are all valid concerns that parents have had, I think, in the first week of school, the first weekend, the second week of school with parents forgetting their login information that they set up in their pass codes or forgetting their security questions, and they've had to go in and get hard resets. We've all, I've taken the calls and, and worked with technology to get that resolved with parents. And we all, it's been, I think, Anne described. And we all, it's been, I think Anne described it best, it's all hands on deck. We all have taken turns and really gone in to work with parents and to get their questions. And so there's not a tool that we have that monitors how long someone has been on a call. But when we get their elevates or when they're calling in, we're trying to get through them. But as I'm sure you can imagine, on the first day of school, when there's issues, if you get thousands of people calling in on the help desk, the wait time is, the wait time is long.
So I know, and this is at the pleasure of my colleagues. And I don't know if it's because I'm a former call center manager, but when you have a help desk, if we could put something more formal in place where we do have a software or a system that those calls filtered through so that we can monitor the turnaround time, the length of the call, the average hold time, especially with this going into a virtual direction, because that can kind of give us some insight on if we need more staffing, you know, what it just help us better manage so that that's not a barrier for students or their parents while we're trying to learn.
That's great feedback.
Along that lines, I think it would be very helpful. I'm getting a lot of feedback from the community that they're having trouble getting in touch with folks. And I know we have all hands on deck, and this is a pandemic, and we're reacting and doing the best we can. And I think we're doing an amazing job, but I think we maybe need something a little more formal to ensure that we're managing that a bit better.
Yeah, I was, I was going to mention, if I could just mention, our IT department does have a help desk, but it was designed and set up for internal support. So if I have personally have something, and so we have the software to be able to do that. But during the pandemic, we had to open up a help desk for parents that we never had before, right? Usually those questions had come to campuses and were handled by campuses. But you're absolutely right in this kind of new era. It's if we're having all these devices almost moving closer to a one to one, there is a need for being able to track that and do do those types of things. And so moving into what you're used to, which is kind of that more formal help desk platform. And that's definitely something that we've had discussions about and definitely something that is probably in our future. But we're going to continue to look at that.
A cost to it, so we have to get past Ms. Westbrook's.
The Westbrook's litmus test.
We, we had an issue here with, with one of my kids one day. She kept getting kicked out. And so the concern I have is if the kids or the family reach a point of frustration, she was ready to just give up and just not go to school. And so we pushed her back and told her to email the teacher and did all those things that supportive parents who were in the home were able to do. But we have kids out there that, you know, we, somebody talked about the scenario. The kid is at home because their parents are at work and they can't connect with their teacher. We, we, we need to be measuring that so that we can be proactive.
Absolutely. And I think the proactivity comes with our, our plan tonight to begin to open up to have those kids come back. And I agree with you 100% Mr. Adams. I experienced that as a parent with my kids in the district. And so it's, it's definitely a fair assessment. That's why we're really wanting to open the opportunity for our kids to be able to come back to those families who choose to do so. And for, and for the families that don't, again, some of the strategies that other parents have noticed in terms of disconnecting other, you know, you'd be surprised if you go through your house and find and think about how many items are connected to the Wi-Fi and decreasing that. That has helped a lot. The parents have said online that that has helped them a lot as we're giving advice to others. But in addition to that, we're getting 3,000 more hotspots. And the parents are still struggling with that, with that connectivity. Parents will, some parents will have an opportunity to be able to check out an additional hotspot to see if that helps as well.
And I'll also say that.
Comment on that statement, Dr. Watson, because even with a more formal system, you can put an IVR message on that says, if you're having trouble connecting, please try disconnecting some of the other devices and, you know, give them some instruction in the messaging when they call, you know, that can help them. And that even reduces the amount of calls that are coming into our staff and our resources. And so something more formal like that can even help to promote those type of recommendations and reduce calls and frustration.
That's great.
I also think, just bringing all of our staff back this upcoming Tuesday, we've had the team working from home and answering all these calls from home, from their mobile devices. So just having the whole team back in the district at the campus and the district level will really help us as we have these centralized processes in place as well.
Well, if you can give them a big thank you for the board, those that have jumped in and taken phone calls, we appreciate it. And I think it just futuristically, we need to to explore something, you know.
And Anne's team too. I don't want to leave her out. Anne's team had their own registration help desk for many weeks, and they had lots of calls. So it has been a whole team effort.
Just wanted to add to the, what Kachar said, with the staff that's coming back this week. The principals and the teachers have been very proactive. They're not waiting to react. So they've actually been doing at bats already with the technology so that they start to get very comfortable with students that might be still remote. And then they have, when they have students in front of them. So they're practicing to get their laptops in the right position, to work with the projectors so that they're really trying to anticipate and decrease the number of issues they have when they actually get ready to go live the following week.
Well, thank you all very much for your questions. Any other questions?
Yes. Well, first of all, I just want to say I am so impressed. This is a massive effort. When you're talking about over 20,000 computers and trying to get everybody connected and logged on and everything else, and something we've never done before. I just, I'm just amazed at what you've done. Now, on a different note, to be absolutely honest, I think we all know that there could be a Corona outbreak at a school. And I appreciate your flow diagram of the principal notifying people, that sort of thing. What I'm concerned about is the testing for the people who've been exposed. It seems that the county, their testing takes several days. It's very slow. Is there any prospect for having any quicker testing so that we can tell who's been exposed and has, is in danger? Or if people are okay?
So there is quicker testing. I know through our benefits department, they partnered with a local health organization to be able to offer a testing for employees that's free. In terms of quicker, I'm not necessarily sure that, I think that's anywhere from three to five days. There are quicker testing resources that give you results in 15 minutes to, to two to six hours. I do know, as, as I've been looking at as well and researching, there are some districts who have partnered with healthcare organizations or hospitals within their area, and the districts are paying for that testing for employees as well that need to be tested so they can get a quick response. And so if there's contact tracing, they'll be able to get those results to determine who else is infected and things of that nature. And so if that's something that you want us to look at in terms of possible partnerships with organizations to determine that, I think Axiom has access to be able to do that. I'm not sure how fast those results come back, but we can look at other organizations. If that's something you want us to investigate and come back to you, we definitely will be able to get that back by Tuesday. But to come back to you after that, even if we have to schedule a special meeting, especially as people are going to be coming back this month, we can come back together and bring that information to you all to have a conversation about that.
My concern is that we're in unknown territory here. And most of what I'm reading nationally is that people fear that returning to school, especially face to face instruction, is going to create these hotspots around. And it just seems that the real key to this, thank you for having the Axiom system. That really looks impressive. But also to have the testing that we really need to know who really has been exposed.
Absolutely. So I would, I'm going to ask Chief Culber to get with Ms. Westbrook's and our recruitment process to get some information back so we can schedule some time to share with you the results. I know that they're out there. We just need to contact them and come back to you with some prices and opportunities. I think, I know our teachers would definitely appreciate that.
Yeah, we have some good, like you said, currently have some good partnerships with some of the local healthcare facilities.
Do we have any other questions? Well, thank you, Mark. This has been very interesting and enlightening. Our 2020 21 school year plan. I thank you and your team. You have done a wonderful job in gathering your information and presenting to us tonight. So thank you to your entire team. For our next item, I'd like to recognize General Counsel Jeremy Brinkley.
Good evening. So it, this looks like a lot of items on the agenda, but I'm going to try to move through them very quickly because I'm sure everyone's had a long day. We're going to start with the resolution regarding the three day closure for Hurricane Laura. As everyone remembers, last week Houston was threatened by a major hurricane. The district was proactive. We closed Wednesday through Friday to allow employees an opportunity to prepare for the hurricane and weather it out. Very fortunately, it did not hit us. But we still have a resolution to pay employees for the days that we were closed to provide extra pay for those employees who were required to work to help prepare for and potentially mitigate damages and to authorize the superintendent to modify the calendar or seek waivers from TEA if necessary. I think that we're probably not having to do either of those things. Mark, correct me if I'm wrong on that or Anne. But it's, it's good to have in place in case something comes up. In case we do realize that that needs to happen, the superintendent will be able to do that. And then we can certainly let the board know if any of those things take place. So are there any questions on the weather resolution?
No, I, I think we are all aware of what happened and can go on and move on that tonight.
And so I think the weather resolution, we were actually going to look at consent for Tuesday. But the next resolution, I am probably going to ask for a vote tonight, if, if that's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so our next resolution is, it's going to be on page 26 of your packet. And as you know, we have a trustee election every year. This year, the two candidates who applied were, are unopposed, which allows us to cancel the election and save some money in that regard. And also simply because there can't be any writing candidates, they would, they would truly be unopposed. And with that, we have a resolution to cancel the election. We've done this a couple of years now where candidates were unopposed. And if the Board is willing and ready, we'd ask that you vote tonight on that so that we can let the county know that we will not be partnering with them this year and can let Anne put that money back into the budget.
Jeremy, I understand that, I should say, Mr. Brinkley, that the money we're saving is pretty substantial this year because of the presidential election. Did you say $200,000 earlier?
It is very substantial this year. One, due to the presidential election. And two, we believe due to the additional protocols and staffing that are necessary because of COVID. And you're right, it's roughly $200,000 this year that, that we're saving. And of course, if there were, if there was opposition, we would have an election. I mean, that's, that's what we do, and that's what we have to do. But we'll, we'll be able to utilize that money for other purposes now.
Are we ready for a motion then?
I will call for. Go ahead. I call for a motion to, for a resolution for the Spring Independent School District Board of Trustees to cancel the 2020 trustee election.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees adopt the resolution for the Spring Independent School District Board of Trustees to cancel the 2020 trustee election.
Madam President, I second.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen and second by Dawn Davis that the Board adopt the resolution for the Spring Independent School District Board of Trustees to cancel the 2020 trustee election. Is there any other discussion? I'll now call for the vote. Winford Adams, Jr.
I will abstain.
Kelly Hodges.
Aye.
Deborah Jensen.
Aye.
Justine Durant.
Aye.
Jenna Gonzalez.
Aye.
Dawn Davis.
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, along with Winford. I will abstain and just to make it known that our names are the two names on the sheet. So the motion carries. Mr. Brinkley, will you continue with the next item?
Yes, and so if you'll join me on page 29 of the packet, we're going to talk about the election just for a little bit longer. Historically, and pursuant to state law, Spring ISD works closely and partners with Harris County to provide election sites or voting sites for, for the election each year on Election Day. And historically, especially when there's been a presidential election, we have closed schools to allow for the anticipated increase in voters who will turn out to the election sites. We don't have control over who comes in. We can't run them through Raptor. We can certainly put them in a separated space away from our students, but they have to have access to bathrooms, ADA compliant ramps and accesses and entries. And so it really does put a burden on our campuses. And now this year with COVID, the county is requesting larger spaces, so requesting the use of our gyms and our cafeterias. Well, that's directly competing with spaces that our schools need to be able to socially distance our students during instruction. And so what we're asking the Board is if you will allow us to make that a student teacher holiday so that we can allow the schools to host the election. The county's asked for 33 campuses. And then the administration will come back with a plan for how we're going to make that day up. But right now, we want to make sure our staff are safe and that we are able to work with the county to allow that democratic process to move forward.
Mr. Brinkley, I thought we had already included in our calendar already.
And so I believe what may have happened was the original calendar that was approved pre-COVID had that day as a holiday. I think when we moved to the intercessional calendar and we're focused on COVID and getting kids back in school and how we were going to do that, that day may have been overlooked.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? And if not, I would ask that we can place this on the consent agenda for Tuesday night.
Thank you, Jeremy. Yes, we will place this on the consent agenda for Tuesday night. Please continue.
All right, so, so the reason we're all here tonight, right? The thing we're all looking forward to, we get to talk about update 115. I'm going to try to make this lively and upbeat as Dr. Hill always has. So, but bear with me because it's my first time. And so get back to my notes. Let me go through a real quick briefing. We haven't had a TASB update in a while. Keep in mind that our Board policy is made up of legal policies, which are essentially a recitation of the law. They are not adopted by the Board. There are local policies. These are the policies that are adopted by the Board. And then there are regulations, and these are policies that are created by the administration. I think those are going to be important tonight because there's a number of policies in here that TASB is recommending for deletion because they don't require Board approval. And TASB is recommending that they be implemented as either administrative regulations or put in handbooks or manuals or other things. And so I think. or other things. And so I think this is going to be a new trend that Tasby is going through, and we'll identify those as we get to them. But first, I know the update packet was sent out to the Board in August. It includes 68 legal policy updates. Again, these are not updates that the Board has to approve. They're provided to the Board for line of sight, and these include a compilation of statutes, court decisions, and administrative code rules that provides a legal framework for key areas of district operations. These are put together as a convenience so that the legal policies that govern this particular area of local policy is easily accessible and easy to find. And so before we move into the locals, I just wanted to ask, were there any questions about the legal policies that you may have seen before we move on? And if not, if something crosses your mind as we're going through these locals, please don't hesitate to ask. We can always jump back to the corresponding legal as well. And so I'm going to try to touch very quickly on each of these local policies. If you look at page 51 in the packet, that's going to be Local Policy BF regarding Board Policies. And this update was really fairly small. It's a sentence that clarifies that a district's legally referenced policies are not adopted by the Board. That's always known that, but Tasby felt that we needed to have an additional sentence just to make that very clear. And so if there are any questions, we can talk through that. Otherwise, I'll move to the next one. Okay, so the next policy is D E D Local on page 55. It's Compensation and Benefits for Vacation and Holidays. Tasby has revised this policy language to include only those items that need to be approved by the Board, which are the specific programs and which employees are eligible. They've removed any language that should really be included in administrative regulation or that otherwise would not require Board approval. These are kind of the nuts and bolts of how the policy works or how the the vacations and holidays work. And so if the Board approves that on Tuesday in first reading, of course, we'll come back for a second reading in October, but in the meantime, what we would do is we would take those and start moving them into a regulation so that everything is very smooth when this policy is adopted in October. So are there any questions about this one?
Yeah, how does that? Okay, so these are holiday, so we have a calendar that identifies what days we have, and then they're also entitled to, our staff is to certain days contractually. So where does this policy fit?
And so these really get into vacation days and holidays, and so that, those are very specific terms. In fact, most 226 employees don't have vacation days. We have non-duty days. I believe it's our classified employees, and Anne, I'm looking at you, though you can't tell because you're just a little box on my screen.
Yes, and so this is primarily for our employees that work the 260-day calendar. So that's our police, for example. So police officers are 365, 24/7. They're always working even on the holidays. And for our operations team, like our custodians, we have several custodians and some maintenance staff that are also 260 days. So they do not receive a lot of the days off that even those of us that are on a 226-day calendar receive. So they accumulate vacation days. And so with those vacation days, they can take off at various times throughout the year, and those days, unlike any other days in the district, accumulate, and when they leave the district, they're paid for those accumulated days up to 60 days. Where the holidays come in is, the perfect example is with the Police Department because they are still working on Christmas Day and the Fourth of July and all of those. So it speaks to how they accumulate time during holidays when they have to work, when they have to report to work.
Okay, are there any other questions?
I wanted to say thank you, but I lost my Zoom.
We see you now. We hear you. Sorry.
All right, thank you.
Jeremy, so does that mean in our policy online manual, we will now see administrative regulations under, for example, D E D? So there'll be a D E D reg now in the policy online manual?
Yes, in the vast majority of these cases, it will either be added to a pre-existing regulation, if there's already one, or we will create the regulation. There may be some instances where we look at this and say, you know, this doesn't even need to be in the policy manual. This needs to be part of the handbook or part of the work calendar. But in the case of this particular policy, yeah, I imagine we're going to see a D E D regulation underneath this.
Okay, thank you.
That helps clarify it a little bit more because I'm like, okay.
Well, I mean, ultimately, like, so we're taking this language out of the local policy, but employees need access to this, and this has been, the online manual has been the place for employees to access the rules for how we do business. And so I just, I think it's important that it remain that way, even if it's not in local. Because I understand why you removed this from local policy. It's more micro than macro, but I still want our people to be able to access it.
I agree, and local policy or administrative regulation, basically the online policy manual is a really nice place for all of this. It's got a search feature. It's all right there with the board policy and the legal policy, and so it, I, like I said, I anticipate most of these removals are going to end up basically with the same language or slightly updated language in a regulation directly below that local policy.
And Mr. Adams, a lot of that information is already included in the employee handbook that our employees receive, and so it's in there even in greater detail in the employee handbook as well.
Were there any other questions about D E D? Right, so our next policy is going to be D I A, and we are probably going to spend a couple of minutes on this one. It's on page 58 of your packet. There are a lot of changes in D I A. D I A is the Employee Welfare and Freedom from Discrimination, Harassment, and Retaliation. So one of the additions includes language to align the policy with the recent Supreme Court decision in Bostock v. Clayton County, which held that adverse employment actions based on homosexuality or transgender status constitute sex discrimination. Prior to that holding, there hadn't been any consensus on that at the federal level, and so that language is added so that we're in compliance with the law there. It also incorporates the requirements of new Title IX regulations, which became effective August 14. There is an internal revision that I want to spend a little bit of time on. Those internal revisions are highlighted in gray. And back in 2015, the Board worked really hard, I think, to create a workplace bullying policy that ended up being placed in D I A Local. And the reasoning being behind it that, yes, certain harassment policies did address some of the same behavior, but I know at the time the Board felt very strongly that a workplace bullying policy was needed somewhere that employees experiencing that type of behavior could look for redress. Tasby originally removed it because they felt that, again, the behaviors were already addressed in the Prohibitive Harassment provision. However, Tasby provides us suggestions, and then the Board, though, ultimately owns this policy. There's no legal reason that we would need to take out the workplace bullying policy. If it truly is redundant, then we have some redundancy, and that's okay. I'm curious if any of the trustees have any thoughts on whether or not you'd like to keep the language in as you see it in the packet, or if you do want to discuss removing it, we can certainly have that conversation as well.
I'm wondering if we should be consistent in our description of people who may not be harassed. If you're on page 60, and we're looking at the first gender that's in gray, and then I'm looking down at the blue part, and it says biological sex and not instead of just sex, and it says gender identity instead of just gender. I wondered if, under the statement of nondiscrimination, it should be using the same language as under discrimination. And I noticed there's going to be the same problem under prohibited harassment. I bow to the people with legal training to tell me if we need the same language in each section.
That blue section, that's Tasby's edit, correct?
Yes, and as I know that the Governance Committee knows, because I know we talked about it last night, because of the Bostock v. Clayton County holding that basically said these gender identity and other things do now fall within sexual harassment, I think Tasby took out that gender, that the word gender, but they have kept it in in the student policy FFH that we'll talk about in a few minutes. And I've left it in, and we can certainly take it out if the Board chooses. I've left it in because if something changes in the Supreme Court in, you know, six months, or a year, or three years, or 10 years, it allows us to continue being inclusive. Our policy has always been very inclusive, and it would just ensure, even though it's a little bit redundant, that there would be some inclusivity there. Now, with that said, I haven't answered Dr. Jensen's question, but are you referring to the example language in blue on the top of page 61? Or you may be muted.
In fact, when I started to talk, this is a great system. It reminds you that you've got your mic off. Okay, going back, what I was looking at back is the prohibited conduct there? Just above it, do you see that paragraph, under discrimination and just above prohibited conduct? In accordance with law?
On page 60.
I see that now.
Oh, that's page 60. I'm sorry. The way they talk about it is basis of biological sex, gender identity, sexual orientation. You know, they give specific examples, and I just wondered if we needed to be consistent whenever we talked about it in statement of nondiscrimination and also in prohibited harassment. Should we still be saying biological sex and gender identity? Or it does not matter?
So if I'm remembering my statutory interpretation class, sometimes listing with specificity excludes things that are not listed. Is that right, Jeremy? Is that what you remember?
It, yeah, you're absolutely right. Of course, this has a catch-all at the end that says, or any other prohibited basis related to sex. But what we can do is, we can certainly go back and take a look at that. And if there are any changes before Tuesday night, we can certainly provide those to the Board. And if a deeper dive is needed, we can even do that, bring it to governance, and then bring it back to the Board on second reading and pull it out so that the Board can specifically see that language. That catch-all, though, makes me feel a lot more comfortable. And you made me notice, when I look at this, I mentioned Tasby had taken out gender in most of these areas, but in the discrimination paragraph right above that, they left gender in. So I think just to stay consistent on the leaving gender in part, we should do that. But that catch-all makes me feel a lot better. But let us take a look at that, and if there are any changes, we can certainly make sure the Board's aware of that Tuesday and go from there.
General Counsel, the only thing I wanted to add was that that specifically is under the definition section, and I believe in keeping with the new Supreme Court ruling, that's why you have that detailed out definition of what is meant by discrimination on the basis of sex. Because all those are falling under the definition section, and that's why they've got that expanded piece under, right there, under discrimination.
Yeah, let us take a closer look at that. Now, we can certainly bring that back to the Board.
Yeah, on the subject of the workplace bullying provisions, I'd like to leave that there. That would be my vote. I think, especially as a district, as we are working to develop, you know, sort of a vision in terms of equity and social emotional learning, being explicit about that issue, at least for the time being, is a good thing.
I think it's been trending in the noneducational realm. I believe educational institutions have been slow to pick up on it, but of course, our Board was on the forefront back in 2015, asking for creating and implementing such a policy. Are there any other questions or thoughts on this one? If not, we can go to D M D. And so D M D Local is on page 68. This one is a wholesale removal by Tasby because Board adoption is not required, and so this is another one that we would see likely created and placed in a D M D regulation as an administrative regulation. And if there are no questions, I'll go to E I, Academic Achievement on page 70. And so recently, there were some updates to the Administrative Code that allow the award of partial credit based on, they changed some language in that, too. It was based on semester. Now it's based on a student passing half of the class. And Tasby revised the language in E I to align with that awarding of partial credit. And if there are any questions, we can talk through that. Otherwise, I'll go to the next one. So F B Local is our Equal Educational Opportunity Policy. That's on page 72. There were a couple of very small revisions here to align with the changes in Title IX Regulations. Basically, authorizing, so assigning and authorizing Title IX Coordinator and a 504 Coordinator. And so those are pretty minor changes. If there are any questions, we can talk through it. Otherwise, we will go to F D Local on page 76, Admissions. Here, Tasby added language regarding transition assistance is required by recent changes in the Administrative Code. These are, this is primarily for students who are homeless or students who are in substitute care and lining out what that assistance is that we have to provide for transitioning those students into our district. So are there any questions on that? And if not, we will move forward. Okay, the next policy is, I'm sorry, I let myself get out of place here. F E B Attendance Accounting, Attendance and Attendance Accounting on page 80. And this one is actually an interesting one. It's a minor change, but the Administrative Code was recently updated, and so now we're not required to take attendance in either the second hour or the fifth hour. Local school districts can decide what their attendance hour is going to be. That time does not have to be included in local board policy, and so Tasby has included in here that it would be delegated to the superintendent to determine the time of attendance taking per campus. And so if there are any questions, we can talk through it. Otherwise, we will go to.
That's how we, are we looking at implementing anything different than what we do as a result of this policy change?
No, ma'am. We're still posting at the beginning of the year after the development of the calendar. Our, we call it the money period, which is when ADA and attendance is taken. So we posted in our procedures. All of our campuses are aware of it, and we have, we host our training. So no, no major changes due to that.
Are there any other questions?
The second period, right? Typically.
In most cases, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, our next policy is F F G Student Welfare, Child Abuse and Neglect, page 83. This one actually has some fairly significant changes as well. There are new rules in the Administrative Code regarding the district's responsibilities for child abuse and neglect, including specific policies about sexual abuse, trafficking, maltreatment of students, requirements that we implement methods for increasing staff, student, and parent awareness. maltreatment of students, requirements that we implement methods for increasing staff, student and parent awareness of these issues, implementing anti-victimization programs, making counseling available. The district really is already very much in compliance with this. We have significant staff training that's required every year, whether you've passed it, you know, five times or 20 times, you have to take it again every year. We have resources on our website for parents and staff to find information about sexual abuse and sex trafficking, information in our handbook. And I recently had a conversation with Dr. Zimmerman, who is our Director of Mental Health. And she was telling me about, we have a variety of anti-victimization programs on all of our campuses. And then we also partner with Harris County through the KIIS program to have, I believe it's seven or eight KIIS workers who assist families with resources involving not only child abuse and neglect, but many other resources that Harris County can provide for families who are in need of those. And so if there are any questions, we can certainly talk through this.
I, I just have a technical question about the writing on, well, it's page 85, bottom of the page. There's a one and two. And the way they've written this, one has just abuse or neglect. It doesn't have a sentence or anything. Should that even be there?
That is a good question.
I mean, it's a minor thing, but it's just awkward to have that in the middle of it.
We'll, we'll go back and take another look at that. And we'll have it either figured out or removed before Tuesday night. Okay, so our next policy then is going to be FFH, Student Welfare, Freedom from Discrimination, Harassment and Retaliation on page 89. This is very similar to DIA in that it was significantly updated to align with the new Title IX regulations that became effective August 14th. Of course, we do have a team in the district within HR who is comprised of our Title IX coordinator, Title IX decision maker. And Julie, you'll have to remind me to, I think, believe two other positions now that are required by Title IX. These are not standalone positions. These are positions that do have other work as well, but one of their primary responsibilities are these Title IX duties so that we can comply with OCR and make sure that our students are safe. And so are there any questions regarding FFH local? And if not, then we will go to FMF local, Student Activities, Contest and Contributions on page 101. This is another one that Tasby has identified as not requiring board adopted policy. So they've made a wholesale deletion. And again, this is one that I anticipate would end up as an FMF regulation directly below FMF legal or FMF local. And if there are not any questions, and we'll go to FNG, this is our second to last one, and these will be quick. FNG is our Student Rights and Responsibilities. This is our Student Parent Complaints and Grievances Policy, it's on page 104. It has been revised to align with the protected classes added to FFH as far as identifying other processes that a grievant may have to go through before they come through the FNG grievance pro- process. What it has also done is clarified the specific timeline for complaints by a person who was refused entry or ejected from district property. Persons in that situation who we have essentially banned from a campus or a facility have to have the ability to present their concerns to the board within 90 days. They do go through the normal grievance process, level one, level two, level three. We just have to make sure that process can get them to level three within 90 days of initiation of their complaint. And then in fact, GF local, the very last policy here, page 113, is the same change. So FNG is for students and parents. GF would be for members of the public, maybe at a football game, who have been refused entry or required to leave one of our facilities. They would also have to be able to bring their case to the board within 90 days of initiation. So if there are any questions on any of these, I'm happy to go back to any of them. And if there are not, then we can always move forward.
Now, this was the update that was 666 pages?
Yes.
I, I scanned it, it was looking like more in peace or something. So anyway, thank you for all that work. And Jeremy, if you can give the explanatory notes at the beginning, and oftentimes I start with those because it lets you know, high level, what page did those start on?
Those are going to be back up under, I believe they're actually within the legal policy piece, so it's going to be page 33.
So for my fellow board members, that's kind of your clip notes, like, from old school days. That gives you the, the meat of what's changing.
Then there is also a, a high-level overview that I believe Jason sent to the, the board with the packet back in August called Vantage Points, that Tasby writes specifically for trustees. It's roughly six pages. It gives you a nice high-level overview that then you can dig into more of the specifics with the explanatory notes. So thank you for pointing that out. Are there any other questions? And then I would just ask if we can place these on the consent agenda for Tuesday for first reading, and then we would of course bring them back for second reading in October. And in the meantime, those couple of policies that we're going to look a little deeper into will pull that together and, and put it in the packet for Tuesday. And they can always be pulled off the consent agenda if there are concerns with those.
Jeremy, this is a long list for our update, but like you said, it's our first reading. And usually we do get a long list on the first read. So thank you for going through that, and we will look at it, look at our cheat note, cheat notes, as Mr. Rant calls it, and then refer back to you on Tuesday on any items that we may have any concern about, and go from there.
Excellent, thank you all so much.
Thank you. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief Innovation and Equity Officer, Dr. Lupita Hannah-Hosse.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse. Members of the board, just really quickly bringing back to you our annual, no. We do this every two years. So this is our renewal of our inter-local agreement with Lone Star North Harris College. So recall, we have our early college, spring, early college now at Lone Star. And so this is our annual renewal, or biannual renewal, I should say. And currently, the board at Lone Star is reviewing the contract, finishing it up on their side. And so we will be providing it to you as soon as they finish it on their side. But it's just time to do that renewal with Lone Star.
Any questions, anyone? Thank you. As usual, we appreciate working with Lone Star.
Yeah, I was having trouble getting off mute. Dr. Hannah-Hosse, as we're renewing that, are we looking any expansions or changes? Or pretty much status quo, you know?
Actually, there is going to be some expansions. One of the, the, I guess, the, the good thing, outcome out of this pandemic is even Lone Star is doing much more remote learning. And so we're really looking at the classroom spaces that we have. You'll recall, we were in two buildings, and so we've had the ability to cluster our students more closely. So they're traveling to less buildings. And so we're actually finalizing that part, or Ms. Gidry is finalizing that part. So it's brought us a lot of opportunities and, and the ability to really have our students more concentrated in these, in this one building. So, and we're always looking for opportunities. Lone Star North Harris has been a great partner with us. And so continue to partner with them and expand our dual credit course offerings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hannah-Hosse. We will await their contract with them. Thank you. Chief Financial Officer, Anne Westbrook, I think you are next on my agenda.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, President Newhouse. The first item is our taxpayer refunds monthly report, and it begins on page 121 of your packets. I'd like to ask if, if there are any questions on any items on the report. Okay. If there are none, then I will move to our next item, which is the monthly report of cooperative purchases that exceed $50,000. And that report begins on page 125, and it's much shorter than it was last month. Are there any questions on the items listed on the report? No? Okay. Then we'll move to the next item, which is on page 128. And this is an annual item that we bring to the board, and it's the certification of anticipated collection rate for the next year's taxes. And so we're required to provide this certification to the board, and the key word here is anticipated. And it's, we anticipate that when you include our current levy of our taxes, plus any delinquent taxes, plus any penalties and interest, that between July 1st and July 1st of the next year, that we will have received, we will have collected 100% of our taxes. And so this is, this is required because we need to certify this rate to you all so that we can use that rate to do our truth and taxation calculation, to calculate our tax rate that will come to the board for approval at the October board meeting. So as part of the last legislative session, there was new legislation that we always receive our, our estimate of our taxes in April, and we use that estimate to develop our budget that's approved in June. This year, for the first time, we received an additional estimate of our taxes that was received on July 25th this year. And then we just received our final certified values this week on August 31st. And so the values that we received on August 31st were very, very close to the amount that we used to develop our budget. And so we're, with this anticipated collection rate of 100%, plus the now certified values that we've received, that's the information that we'll move forward with to do the final calculation of our tax rate that we'll bring forward. Okay. And if there are no questions, then I will move to the next item, which begins on page 130. And this is an interlocal agreement between Spring ISD and Klein ISD for the storage of their records. So the team over at Klein ISD reached out to our team here that oversee the distribution center and requested to use our facility to store their records. And because they do not have the space over in Klein ISD. So we see this as an opportunity to provide a service to our neighboring district for a nominal fee. We'll work with the Klein ISD team to develop an actual agreement. This is the interlocal that gives us the okay, based upon the board's approval, to move forward with establishing what that agreement would look like. One thing that's critical to note is that we would only store their records. At no point in time would we ever have access to their records or would we ever tamper with or, or, or deal with their records in any fashion other than storage. And that's having them in a dedicated spot in our distribution center and working out with Klein ISD what the process would be for them to access those records when they need to.
I don't have a question, but I just want to say that I like cooperating with our neighbors. And, and welcome any opportunity to do so.
Thank you, we, we were happy to be able to assist as well. Okay. If there are no questions on that item, then I will move to the last item, which is on page 133. And it's also an interlocal agreement. This one is a bit of a proactive approach. So in a previous board meeting, I brought forward to you all to receive your approval to be a part of the TEA Operation Connectivity, which gave the district the opportunity to purchase several devices and hotspots. And we were able to get Chromebooks and hotspots through the TEA Operation Connectivity Program at 50% of the total cost. So that was a very time-sensitive process. We ordered the, the devices and we paid, we turned the payment around within about two to three days in order to get that, that order expedited. And we've already begun receiving the 3,000 hotspots in the district. So when the program first came about, we heard about the opportunity for the local county to also set aside some funds to assist school districts with the cost of that, of those devices. And so if the county were to put money towards the program, then TEA would match what the county would, would put towards the program, which would effectively bring the cost to the district to zero. And so we recently received notification that the county is going to set funds aside for the school districts to offset that cost that we've already incurred. And so that's very time-sensitive. And we're anticipating that on Monday, the county will put out their guidelines, applications and everything that we need in order to start that process. And between Monday, September 7th and October 1st, we have to get everything completed for the county and over to TEA in order to take full advantage of receiving this additional reimbursement for those, those devices. And so we're, instead of bringing the interlocal to you as a ratification, we're asking proactively ahead of time to receive your approval to move forward with that interlocal when it becomes available next week.
The only thing I wanted to add to that, I mean, I know it's, it's, it's late, but this is, I know Ann and I were smiling. This is huge. I mean, so for your proactivity and allowing us to purchase that many devices that TEA would give us 50% for, and then the county turn around and paying that other 50% off, that's huge for, for our community and for this district, and your proactivity. So thank you all for that, this is going to really help us a lot.
I just want to see if I understand what you're saying, Ms. Westbrook. So back in March, when we, we took $5 million from fund balance for technology, are you saying we're basically going to get that back, or what?
No, sir. So we've actually purchased three waves of technology. And so the first wave was the $5 million that you're referring to right now. And so that was the first set of devices that we purchased, which I believe was about 9,000 devices at that point in time. And so that, we use fund balance. We're going to seek reimbursement through the coronavirus relief fund to reimburse us for those funds, for, for the funds that we spent on that. The next batch that we bought was another about nine, I think each one was close to 9,000, another 9,000. And we're waiting to see if there's going to be some funds available to reimburse us for that one. So now this is the third wave that we weren't anticipating being able to, to purchase. But this was when TEA came out with the program, we took advantage of it, and that's what allowed us to finally get to that one-to-one across the district. So it's that third batch of devices, that's about 9,700 Chromebooks and 3,000 hotspots that we purchased through the Operation Connectivity. So that cost us about $1.4 million because of the 50% offset that TEA did. So that cost us about one point four million dollars because of the fifty percent, um, offset that TA did. So now the county has come in and they're saying that they're going to provide a portion of the funds. So then TA now matches what the county does and that reimburses us. So it's, this is specific to that third and final, um, devices that we ordered.
I understand, thank you.
Okay, if there are no-
Very fortunate that we jumped out there on that early because we had no idea that we would be getting this back, that it would be matched. Had no idea.
Yes, and we're taking full advantage of any dollars that come available for reimbursement. We're taking full advantage of it because we still have needs. And so any reimbursement we get, we can reinvest those dollars into other things that are needed.
And Ms. Westbrook, I want to echo Dr. Watson's comments because this is phenomenal. And, and you and your team do a great job of ensuring that we, we don't miss out on these types of opportunities. So we really appreciate your due diligence and, and being diligent in getting, uh, getting us savings and opportunities where we can. Amazing work.
Yes ma'am, thank you. It is definitely a team effort across this team and the financial services team. Thank you very much.
So Ms. Westbrook, you're taking us out on a happy note tonight. Yes. That concludes all of our items on the agenda. And as I said, you're taking us out on a happy note tonight. Since there are no other items on tonight's agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Madam President, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Do I have a second? It's been moved by Justine Durant and seconded by Winford Adams that the Board of Trustees adjourn this meeting. I will now poll the bo- poll the board members for their vote to adjourn this meeting. Winford Adams, Jr.?
Aye.
Kelly Hodges? Yep. Unmute yourself, Kelly. Ms. Hodges, unmute yourself. We didn't get your response. There you go.
Okay, I'm using my-
Kelly Hodges?
Can you hear me?
We can now, yes.
Okay, yeah, it's on my phone. I'm having some audio issues. I'm actually calling in from my phone. I said aye.
Okay, thank you. Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Justine Durant?
Aye.
Jenna Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dawn Davis?
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, vote aye. The motion carries unanimously. There's no further business. This meeting is officially adjourned tonight at nine fifteen PM. Thank you everyone and have a pleasant evening. Look forward to this weekend and see you next Tuesday.